Hola, buenos días. La audiencia pública llevada por el Comité de tierras, medioambiente, vivienda, agroescuadra y infraestructura fue llamada a orden y la hora es dos de la tarde de las 12. El día de hoy es martes, 1 de julio de 2025. El notificación del audiencia fue diseminada a todas las redes locales en el 24 de junio de 2025, con la segunda notificación proporcionada el 30 de junio de 2025. La notificación del audiencia también fue anunciada en el sitio web de la legislatura de Guam y el portal de notificación pública de Guam. Este tarde voy a arreglar la agenda como si dejáramos que el proyecto 119-38 COR vaya antes del proyecto número 7-38 COR. Conferencié con mis miembros del comité y no tuvieron ninguna objeción a eso, para que podamos conseguir que el oficio del fiscal general y también el auditor público testifican y luego podrán terminar conduciendo su negocio. El proyecto 119-38 COR fue presentado por el senador Tetele Titegui, Chris Barnett, Theresa Terlahi, Sabina Perez, Shelley Calvo y el presidente Frank Eplas Jr. en un acto reiterado, 5127 D de Subart. 2, capítulo 5, título 5, anotado en el código de Guam, que se rechazó en la ley 38-1 relativa a la restauración de la supervisión legislativa sobre contratos excepcionales. Y antes de empezar, me gustaría pasar por encima de las reglas generales de conducta. Los individuos testificantes primero serán reconocidos por el presidente antes de hablar y establecerán su nombre por motivos de mantenimiento de la memoria. Las preguntas y testimonios estarán confinados al tema o a la sustancia o naturaleza del proyecto. No se permite que el testimonio del senador o del individuo testifique a pesar de la mala condición. El personal de la audiencia puede ordenar la despedida de los miembros de la legislatura de Guam que no observan el decorum adecuado en遵循 de las reglas de la legislatura de Guam. Un violación de esta regla general de conducta resultará en la despedida de este auditor público. Vamos a proceder a la testimonial del proyecto número 119-38 COR y invito al autor, el senador Tetele Titegui, a dar su declaración de abertura. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. Muchas gracias por permitir que mi proyecto fuera primero porque sé que tenemos muy ocupados individuos que testifican hoy que necesitan regresar. Es muy apreciado. Y les agradezco a mis colegas que están aquí este tarde por este proyecto. Así que empecemos con la verdad. La ley 38-1 fue un paso importante hacia atrás para la transparencia y la responsabilidad. Esa ley, originada del proyecto 8-38 COR, quitó la legislatura de Guam de su autoridad a la larga para revisar y aprobar contratos excepcionales, negocios involucrando tierras públicas y instalaciones que pueden durar décadas y afectar a generaciones. Con el paso de esta ley, los individuos potencialmente conectados o entidades ahora pueden silenciosamente cerrar negocios de amistad: 30, 50 o incluso 100 años, sin una sola audiencia pública y sin que los representantes electos del pueblo vean lo que es ese contrato. Eso no es eficiencia. Eso es un paso hacia el abuso. Así es como terminamos con negocios indignantes leasing tierras públicas del gobierno. Así es como terminamos con más situaciones como la leasing de la YTK y la ITC. El proyecto 119-38 es nuestra respuesta. Restituye la ley pública lo que la ley 38-1 eliminó sin miedo: la autoridad de la legislatura. Este proyecto asegura que cualquier contrato excepcional involucrado en propiedad pública debe traerse a este organismo para revisión pública, escrutinía legislativa y aprobación, y eso es más de 15 años. El proyecto 119 no elimina o baja el número de años que todos estamos de acuerdo en este organismo durante 15 años. Esto no se trata de política. Se trata de proteger al pueblo de Guam de la corrupción, de negocios de la sala trasera y de ser engañado por el valor de su tierra, la tierra del pueblo. Incluso la gobernadora Leon Guerrero, en su decisión de permitir que el proyecto 67-38 se prolongue, reconoció este principio. Escribió: "El Organizado Act implica en la legislatura la autoridad para definir los estándares de adquisición de aportes a los aportes a los aportes por autoridad estatutista que ha abandonado", que abandonó en el proyecto 67. Continúa diciendo: "Mientras la legislatura pueda estar dispuesta a abdicar de la responsabilidad del Organizado Act, no estoy dispuesta a abdicar de la mía", sin más. Y no podía estar de acuerdo con ella más en eso. La transparencia no es una carga. La supervisión no es obstrucción. Estos son herramientas que usamos para prevenir negocios internos y para asegurarnos de que cada decisión involucrando activos públicos se hace en el abierto, donde el pueblo puede verlo y hablar sobre él. Cuando la supervisión desaparece, también se confía en el público. Estamos aquí para poner un parpadeo a eso, para cerrar el agujero, para cerrar la puerta a negocios de amistad, para volver la supervisión legislativa y para restablecer la voz del pueblo. Porque la tierra pública no es una entrega privada, pertenece al pueblo de Guam y nosotros y los funcionarios electos tenemos el deber de defenderlo abiertamente, honestamente y con completa responsabilidad. Señor presidente, tengo un par de testimonios que no son muy largos, señor, si me permite. Me gustaría leer en el registro. Y este testimonio es de la gobernadora Joseph Ada, quien ha presentado un testimonio escrito a este comité. Y empieza: "Señor presidente Ada, escribo con fuerte apoyo al proyecto 119-38 COR como un acto para restaurar la supervisión legislativa sobre contratos excepcionales involucrando nuestras tierras públicas y instalaciones de nuestro país. Como gobernadora de Guam, siempre he creído que la transparencia, la responsabilidad y la prudencia de la gestión de nuestros activos públicos son esenciales para la eficacia de la dirección gubernamental y la operación del gobierno. Esta medida se busca apropiadamente para reinstalar un salvaguardo vital asegurando que los acuerdos largos de tiempo significativos involucrados en propiedad pública son sujetos a revisión legislativa y aprobación. Esto no se trata de crear una burocracia innecesaria. Se trata de mantener la confianza pública y proteger los intereses de nuestro pueblo ahora y para la generación futura. Los contratos excepcionales a menudo involucran leases o acuerdos de valor sustancial y consecuencias a largo plazo para nuestro país. Permitir que tal acuerdo proceda sin supervisión legislativa invita al riesgo de tomar decisiones sin importancia de la participación pública, visión a largo plazo o chequeos adecuados y balances. El proyecto número 119-38 asegura que estas decisiones serán tomadas en el abierto con los representantes electos del pueblo, que se encarguen de los asuntos que pueden moldear el futuro de nuestra comunidad. Respetablemente, exijo a este comité, a su comité y a la legislatura a apoyar este pasaje. Gracias por su atención a esta cuestión importante y por su servicio dedicado al pueblo de Guam. Muchas gracias, gobernadora de Guam, Joseph Ada." Luego recibimos otro testimonio, señor presidente. Este testimonio es de la gobernadora Eddie Baza Calvo. Señor presidente Ada, señor presidente Ada, escribo para expresar mi apoyo al proyecto 119-38 COR, que restituye una importante capa de supervisión legislativa sobre contratos excepcionales involucrados en tierras públicas y instalaciones. Durante mi tiempo en el servicio público, tanto como senador y como gobernadora, he visto las consecuencias duraderas de decisiones tomadas sin transparencia adecuada o responsabilidad. Leases a largo plazo y contratos especiales involucrados en propiedad pública deben mantenerse a la mejor estándar porque pueden moldear el futuro de Guam durante décadas. Estos no son solo decisiones administrativas. Son decisiones sobre la tierra del pueblo, la oportunidad del pueblo y a menudo el dinero del pueblo. El proyecto 119 pone de nuevo en marcha un mecanismo que asegura que los acuerdos de gran escala reciben la escrutinía pública antes de que se finalicen. Ese tipo de chequeo y balance es no obstrucción. Es un buen gobernanza. Asegura que el público ve exactamente lo que estamos obteniendo en devolución por activos que pertenecen a todos nosotros. El pueblo de Guam merece saber que sus funcionarios electos están observando con cuidado cuando millones de dólares en contratos o leases de siglos se propone. La supervisión legislativa rectifica la confianza pública y nos ayuda a evitar errores que podrían costarnos en el camino. Acomodo a los autores de este proyecto y a la actuación para proteger los intereses del público, y exijo al comité a mover esta legislación adelante. Muchas gracias, gobernadora de Guam, Eddie Baza Calvo. Gracias, señor presidente, por la oportunidad de leer estos testimonios. Gracias.
De nada, senador Tetele Titegui. Aquí para testificar este tarde tenemos al honorable Douglas Moilen, el fiscal general de Guam, el fiscal Lee Miller, el ex presidente y actual auditor público, BJ Cruz. Vamos a empezar con usted, Pugdodder. ¿Quisiera comenzar?
Lo haré rápido.
Gracias, señor.
Me gustaría acompañar los dos testimonios de los dos gobernadores antiguos en apoyo a esta legislación. No creo que necesite decir nada más. Creo que lo dijeron en plena vista con muy eficacia, así que, si es posible, me acompañaré. Pero solo quería dejar en el registro que creo que es imperativo que la legislatura reinstale su supervisión sobre estas leases. Tal vez no necesites tener 90 días, pero al menos déjalo volverte durante 30 o 45 días. Eso es para ustedes los compromisos. Pero es imperativo que tengas alguna supervisión y lo apruebe porque puede no ser solo negocios de la sala. Puede ser solo negociación mala y ustedes tienen que detenerlo. Así que me uní a los dos gobernadores en apoyo al paso temprano de este documento de legislación. Es imperativo que ustedes reinstalen su supervisión sobre las propiedades y tengan las audiencias y la aprobación de este organismo. Gracias.
Gracias, auditor público, por su testimonio este tarde. El fiscal general Douglas.
Vicepresidente Tony Ada, senador Duenez, senador Barnett, senador San Augustine, senador Titegui y senador Terlahi. Mi nombre es Douglas Moilen. Soy el fiscal general de Guam y estoy aquí a cargo del oficio de los agiles y nuestro cliente, el pueblo de Guam, en apoyo al proyecto número 119-38. Este proyecto aborda el equilibrio de poderes entre dos ramas clave de nuestro gobierno. La legislatura tiene la autoridad, pero más importante, el deber de proteger el bienestar financiero del pueblo. Demasiado a menudo, y ahora más que nunca, ustedes senadores deben proteger nuestros bolsillos contra decisiones financieras arruinadas por una rama ejecutiva que tiene una historia de irresponsabilidad fiscal. El gobernador no solo trató de engañar a la última legislatura intentando endeudar a nuestro pueblo con una leasing con el Departamento de Defensa de Estados Unidos para un complejo médico, sino que un gobernador cuyo gobierno ahora está bajo investigaciones criminales y denuncias en ambos tribunales locales y federales. Atacado a mi testimonio escrito es nuestra opinión legal del 31 de marzo de 2023 sobre esa leasing de la muerte. Refiero a que no aprobara esa leasing de 75 años porque circunvén de su deber como senadores decidir si nuestro pueblo debería pagar, construir, equipar y trabajar un enorme complejo médico, una enorme instalación médica que en su cara no tenía fuente de financiación para completar, podría nacionalizar por el ejército durante una emergencia a los detrimentos del pueblo y sería el hospital y campus del gobierno federal después de la expiración de esa leasing. El proyecto 119-38 impone su papel importante para ver y balancear el jefe ejecutivo del préstamo. Si no puedes pagar por ello, no lo compras. Es el tipo de sentido común que este gobernador carece y el cual necesitamos que haya una fuerte legislatura republicana para imponer y protegernos. Como la ley, el proyecto 119-38 intenta cambiar, el gobierno ignoró el deber fundamental de la legislatura, sin salvaguardas para incorporar en el sistema, como la firma del agilizado electo siendo requerido para los contratos antes del gobernador o la firma del agilizado requerido por más de 500,000 adquisiciones por todos los departamentos y agencias. Arruinamiento financiero y deterioración de condiciones de vida por dinero no se nos hará si el gobernador no se verifica. Los informes de los audentes públicos electos durante los últimos seis años señalaron los sonidos de alarma. Este gobernador y el anterior agilizado marginaron nuestros informes de auditor público y simplemente ignoraron al auditor público BJ Cruz. Cuando este agilizado electo tomó el cargo, esos informes y cada informe emitido después se convirtió en lectura requerida para mis prosecutors y abogados civiles. ¿Cómo respondió el gobernador? Weaponizó nuestro judiciary para atacar a mis prosecutors y abogados para hacerlos terminados y volver a los estados. Este gobernador y ciertas personas en su gobierno están involucrados en un patrón para debilitar mis operaciones de la policía y mi capacidad para investigar y procesar a sus corruptos empleados gubernamentales que nos han y están perdiendo. Desde el lento caminar de mis adquisiciones y contrataciones de abogados y personal de apoyo, hasta literalmente weaponizar los tribunales para usar reglas éticas para detener mis deberes de la policía. Este gobernador está usando nuestros dinero de contribuyentes para proteger a ella y a su corrupto gobierno. Con todo respeto, es su deber como senadores ayudar a BJ y a mí a proteger a nuestro pueblo de este tipo de corrupción humana, corrupción a la cuenta de los contribuyentes. Pasar el proyecto 119-38 que restituye la ley antigua simplemente eleva los salvaguardes contra un gobernador corrupto y gobierno como este gobernador Leon Guerrero está corriendo. Ahora más que nunca, la legislatura de Guam tiene un deber para nuestro pueblo para reinar en un gobernador y su gabinete. De todas las indicaciones, preside sobre un sindicato corrupto de ciertos funcionarios financiados por contribuyentes cuyos juicios el día anterior se acerca rápidamente. El proyecto 119-38 restituye la responsabilidad que creían los legisladores pasados, es decir, que el jefe ejecutivo y su gabinete de gasto deben ser revisados y salvaguardados por el Senado democráticamente electo del pueblo.
Señor agilizado, si podemos seguir en el núcleo del proyecto 119-38.
Señor vicepresidente, esto ha sido presentado. Esto es un foro abierto. Esto se refiere al proyecto porque es un chequeo y balance en el gobernador. Con todo respeto, si me permite continuar.
Continúe, pero.
Gracias, señor. Cheques y balances requieren la habilidad de decir no. No, si todos dicen que no está en los mejores intereses financieros del pueblo. Siempre se trata del dinero. Con ese dinero o carencia de dinero, nuestra calidad de vida mejora o padece, especialmente en un país. Estos gobernadores y con sus términos de cuatro a ocho años, matan la vida de nuestra comunidad. Pueden ser o ser la más honrada de Guam o la sucia suciedad de Guam. Legislaciones como el proyecto 119-38 nos hacen un pueblo de leyes y no víctimas de una mala elección para gobernador. La salud, la educación y la seguridad pública dependen del dinero. El dinero bien invertido proporciona buena calidad de vida. El dinero perdido por funcionarios corruptos del gobierno bajo un gobernador corrupto de cuatro o ocho años proporciona lo que ahora tenemos. La salud, la educación y la seguridad pública están todos deteriorándose bajo este gobernador durante los últimos seis años y medio. Permitir a este gobernador o cualquier futuro gobernador la habilidad de vincular a nuestro pueblo y a esta legislatura por contrato o leasing durante diez o más años que el límite de cinco años previo puede empeorar el reino de cuatro a ocho años de un mal gobernador. Tener a 15 legisladores electos que escrutinen leases durante cinco años, especialmente sobre un gobierno gubernatorial corrupto, puede salvarnos de 10 años de sufrimiento innecesario. Este proyecto 119-38 restituye lo que nuestros senadores pasados entendieron, específicamente que los tres mayores poderes de la ramada legislativa son los poderes de supervisión, la aprobación de leyes y el gasto. Una vez delegas o olvidas cualquiera de estos tres poderes, no tienes ningún otro rol en el gobierno. El poder corrompe y el poder absoluto corrompe absolutamente significa más ahora que lo hizo hace un mes o dos años y medio. Después de seis años y medio de la reina de este régimen, nuestras vidas están peor off, desde un hospital de basquet y que no puede pagar los billos, hasta un sistema escolar donde los niños solo obtienen la mitad de su educación, hasta una prisión sobrecruzada causada en gran parte por un poder de puerto que falla en inspeccionar el carguito por metanfetamina. Este gobierno preside sobre el sufrimiento colectivo. Más aún, este gobernador y su gabinete están causando nuestro sufrimiento. Ni siquiera estoy describiendo nuestro agujero de Higatna de una piscina o los caminos de carretera que literalmente romperían tus autos y en billones de reparaciones. Agradezco al miembro de la GOP y la presidenta de supervisión, Titegui, por presentar el proyecto 119-38 y el presidente Blas, así como los senadores Barnett, Terlahi, Perez y Calvo por co-sponsorizar esta legislación. Este proyecto corregirá el proyecto público pasado 38-1. Ya sea que ese proyecto público era bueno o malo en el momento en que fue presentado, escuchado y votado, mientras el tiempo pasa y el último término de este gobernador finalmente llega a un fin, la legislatura de Guam y todos sus senadores, especialmente los presidentes Donald J. Trump republicanos, deben mantener la línea contra un corrupto, liberal, demócrata, socialista gobernador para proteger a nuestro pueblo de no solo malas políticas, sino también la corrupción del gobierno. Exijo a ustedes todos a entrar en la lucha. Lucha para proteger a nuestro pueblo y para mejorar nuestra calidad de vida. Proyectos como este, el proyecto 119-38, nuestro proyecto anti-crime y cualquier legislación que termine o alivie nuestro sufrimiento. Gracias.
Gracias por su testimonio, senador Doug Moilen. ¿El fiscal Miller?
Nada más para añadir a eso.
Gracias, fiscal Miller. Voy a empezar y, ya sabes, fue mi supervisión. No reconocí a mis colegas, el vicepresidente de mi comité, el senador Chris Duenez, el senador Joseph Augustine, el senador Theresa Terlahi y el senador Chris Barnett. Gracias a todos por estar aquí y también al autor del proyecto 119-38. Voy a abrir el panel para cualquier pregunta que mis colegas puedan tener y voy a empezar con el autor de la legislación.
Señor presidente, voy a terminar, si no te importa. Permítanme a mis colegas ir antes de mí, por favor.
Gracias. Mi vicepresidente, senador Duenez, si tiene algún comentario o pregunta.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente, y gracias, señor fiscal general y señor auditor público, por estar aquí. Así que cuando el proyecto fue introducido y discutido, un ex colega de nuestro, el senador Tomada, vino y testificó en favor del proyecto, que rechazaría los contratos excepcionales a largo plazo la revisión legislativa. La justicia detrás de su apoyo fue cuando el proyecto, que tenía gran intención de limitar las leases a cinco años, fue introducido, en realidad puso un parpadeo y dejó básicamente cualquier oferta de leasing de propiedad gubernamental en el futuro. Supongo que mi pregunta primero es, es como si lees el proyecto para su rechazo, porque hay esta constante conversación sobre 15 años y luego podría ser 50 años y luego podría ser 100 años. Eso es una especulación. Mi pregunta es, ¿lees la legislación original como los 15 años siendo exentos de los contratos excepcionales y luego requiriendo aprobación una vez que esos 15 años se han expirado? BJ.
Una vez que los 15 años se han expirado.
Sí, porque el término solo va hasta 15 años, es lo que dice la ley actual. Entonces eso significa, ¿cómo vas más allá de 15 años? Si el 15 años se derrumba, necesitarías aprobación más allá de esos 50 años si esa es la ley, ¿verdad?
38-1, como lo leí, significaría que cualquier, cualquier leasing de 15 años o menos podría ser aprobado con una determinación de necesidad sin los concurrencias de la legislatura. Esta legislación, como la leí, deja los 15 años en lugar, pero añade la provisión que ustedes tienen que, que esta legislatura tiene, tiene que concurrir en ello. Y incluso con los 15 años, no creo que sea ninguna prohibición contra una leasing de 50 o 75 o incluso 100 años. Si una agencia puede negociar algo con más de 15 años y traerlo a ustedes, creo que este organismo es autorizado para aprobar un término excepcional más largo. Pero el problema fue, y sé que había una solicitud para mí venir y testificar cuando estaba, cuando estaba siendo originalmente escuchado antes del proyecto original, no ha habido ninguna prohibición contra la legislatura aprobando una leasing de más de cinco o 15 años. Lo que debe hacer es solo, la agencia tiene suficiente perspectiva y planificación para saber que van a hacer eso y cuando escriben su determinación de necesidad de lo que quieren hacer y si sienten que la única forma en que van a poder leasing la propiedad es por un término más largo de 15 o incluso más largo de cinco, es escribirlo y presentarlo a ustedes. Y si ustedes lo aprueban, entonces pueden salir y negociarlo. Pero solo tienen que hacer el tiempo para planearlo para que pueda ser hecho antes de que empiece. El problema que ha estado teniendo en el pasado es que pasan y hacen estas cosas y luego te traen y dicen, bueno, no podemos, nadie quiere leasing porque quieren tener un 50 año. Bueno, si hubieras presentado un contrato de 50 años a nosotros antes, tal vez podríamos haber podido trabajar en ello y aprobarlo. Y así que no creo que sea después de los 15 años, creo que incluso antes del firmar el contrato que esta legislatura debería proveer sus concurrencias.
Pero usted concurre que 38-1, el 15 años es el límite. No puedes, si son 15 años, son 15 años.
Hay, da a las agencias la autoridad de leasing sin llegar a esta legislatura hasta 15 años.
Correcto.
Y lo que esto, lo que esto está haciendo es ahora declarando que incluso aquellos tienen que volver a la legislatura.
Correcto.
Y todavía se concurre en.
Correcto.
Y no creo que ese límite de 15 años justo ahí prohiba que una agencia venga y presentar a ustedes la única forma en que vamos a poder leasing esta propiedad, porque va a ser un hotel o va a ser algo más, es para, es para darle una leasing de 50 o 100 años y ellos presentan a ustedes y presentan buenos términos. No veo que ustedes sean prohibidos de aprobar eso.
Así que porque la ley actual prohibe algo que pase cinco años, ¿qué sería eso? Una prohibición inadmisible para las agencias que lleguen a decir, tenemos un plan que lo lleva más allá porque necesitamos.
Ustedes.
Para poder hacerlo. ¿Estaría esa prohibición inadmisible de esa agencia? Y luego, y luego si esa fuese la situación, si ellos, si ellos fueran a obtener la aprobación para más de cinco años, ¿entonces también tendrían que volver y tener el acuerdo de leasing ratificado por la legislatura?
De la misma manera que usted hace con los bonos, los poderes vienen a ustedes para pedir permiso para flotar el 350,000, quiero decir, el bono de 350 millones de dólares. Usted lo aprobó, está dentro del límite y van y flotanlo y cuando vuelve, ustedes. comes back, you guys concur in it, don't you? I think we still, we did.
We would have to because of the law currently, but that's not the way it was before in terms of, you know, prior to that five-year going in. In fact, I'm a little surprised because governors, after that law became law, that was their quibble was, you know, we're trying, we have agencies and instrumentals coming before us saying that, you know, there are options to be able to, you know, to make, to lease property for beyond five years for the benefit of the community, and then they couldn't do it, and no one would ever consider then even approaching the government anymore because the five-year prohibition was basically not enough time for them to recoup their capital of millions of dollars.
I don't think there's a prohibition against the legislature entertaining a lease longer than that if the agency can prove that it's in the best interest of the territory.
So the five years then, in your opinion, Judge, basically was just an arbitrary number but not a barrier, so we don't even need any legislation then anymore, just we just need for entities.
No, you still need legislation to concur in it.
No, but I'm saying is we don't need any, the five-year limit then, in your opinion, is meaningless. If any agency or instrumentality were to come down to the legislature and say, "We need this term of a lease to be able to enter into going for procurement of use of property," and then basically the legislature could approve that, notwithstanding have them demonstrated their need, and then whatever lease they executed, they would then come back down for that lease to be ratified at the legislature?
Yes.
Okay.
There have been more not withstandings than the eight of you that are just sitting up there.
No, I understand.
It constantly happens, there's always not withstandings. But the thing is, is that it just has them, they have to just plan ahead and to come and ask you and say, "This is the kind of thing that needs a longer term." There was no need to raise it to fifteen, I don't think, but because you've always had the authority to, as you say, notwithstanding, have a longer one if they can prove to you that it's in the best interest of the territory and the best interest of the agency.
So another bill that said ten, another bill that said fifty, it doesn't matter? The legislature should basically just do business? I want to get to this because the bottom line is, is that if that's really, I mean, your opinion is a very astute opinion, and the bottom, and this legislature, the termination has to be made at some point between the back and forth with other executives who have tried to work through lease opportunities for the Governor of Guam, including the current airport bill that just passed and was lapsed into law, that the reality is, is that we are either going to have legislative approval or not legislative. I don't think the years even matter anymore.
You're right. The legislature should always approve. The number of years is something that you guys need to just look at and see whether or not it's in the best interest of the people and whether or not there's enough escalator clauses in it to protect us, so that we don't have issues like we have. And I'm not faulting either for thirty, forty, fifty years ago negotiating leases that were, now, maybe in 2020 hindsight, was, we think are bad, but at the time were good leases.
So, General, do you concur? Because I think we're, you know, whether we're, whether we've got good guys or bad guys here, I think really the determination for this legislature, what they're really going to be voting on, in my opinion, is going to be whether or not we have legislative approval for leases or not. The years, to me, at this point in time, by the presentation from the Attorney General and the former public auditor and judge, is basically legislative approval is mandatory, and that's what's needed for the people of Guam.
The legislation that was passed by 38, Public Law 38-1 lowered the, or increased the ceiling for the executive branch to enter into leases up to fifteen years. The Public Law 5GCA 215127A, as written, will make anything above it void. So if they try to negotiate, the executive tries to negotiate anything over fifteen and submits it to you, it's by the definition of the statute, void. So, it has it in subsection one, "Any contract, lease, permit, or license made renewed or extended in violation of this law shall become void upon the fifteenth anniversary of the making of such contract, lease, permit, or license." I presume that's a cap that it's putting, but even under the scenario you just gave, if you try to exceed the fifteen, just getting the legislature to approve it under this statutory scheme isn't going to be enough. You're going to have to pass a bill to get past this because it puts a cap on it. So just say you had a twenty-year lease the governor wanted to enact, it'll be submitted to you, but you won't have the vehicle. You'll just approve it by a resolution or however it's approved, but you still need to get past the statute. So, like the former justice is saying, the retired justice is saying, you need to put notwithstanding into the provision of law and actually pass a bill with that to get past this statute. That's how, one mechanism to do it, but, you know, it, really, the discussion as I see it, is it's controlling the money, because what is negotiated, what they can negotiate without your approval is where the devil is in this statute. When you have a governor you can trust, obviously, you trust the person. When you have somebody you don't trust, they could put a high lease amount in it, you know, the negotiated terms, and it goes to the money, and also the property, but I mean, the laws are crafted around your power to control the money. So, yeah, you're raising it back to, I'm sorry, you're lowering it back to where it was at five years.
So, General, I just wanted to be clear, because, I mean, come on, when we speak, we have to speak with what is in the confines of the law. When you say a fifteen-year law, when it's clear at fifteen that it's the law, it cannot be fifty, it cannot be a hundred, it's got, it's fifteen.
But like the former speaker said, usually, if that happens, the administration will send over a special bill for it.
Correct.
And it would say that, you know, notwithstanding this statute, we have a fifty-year package, we think it's good for the people, legislature, please agree with it and fund it. That would be the.
So it would be concurrence, and the one final point I wanted to make, because this, I just want to get to the bottom of, to me, what's being presented and what this body, these years are meaningless at this point, as far as I'm concerned. The issue really is legislature, get back to legislative approval, because that's what you're stating, because that's what I want, to make sure that all fifteen senators are sitting down and understanding what they're voting on, whether they're voting on this repeal for 38-1, or whether they're just saying, "Legislature, get back to approving contracts."
I don't believe, I don't believe there's an attempt to repeal 38-1. It's, I think it's to amend 38-1 by reinstating a provision that was in there before, and I think it's a good, I think it's imperative that you guys have legislative approval, whether it's one, five, fifteen, or twenty, or a hundred. You guys should be involved in it, regardless of the executive, whether or not it's this one or any other. I want the power to always remain with the power of the people in this body to concur and to make sure. The only thing with the caps that we're doing was to say, if it's up to, it used to be up to five, and they didn't need to come to you. So if they increase it to fifteen, and so up to fifteen, and you didn't have to come to you, I'm saying, I really don't care how many years it is, always, always, it has to come back to this body to approve.
So, I'm just calling it.
And the people that say that it's slowing down the process, I say bull. Plan ahead and do it. Right now, the TLUC is talking about cutting back the number of hearings for zone changings. You should always plan for a zone change when you're doing anything in your timeline. That's like coming to the legislature. Keep the power here, guys. Don't, it doesn't matter who's the governor. Always make sure that the power remains with this body.
And so I just wanted to be clear, that's the debate. This is not anymore about five years, fifteen years, thirty years, fifty years, a hundred years. This is about the appearance of the two offices today coming before us saying legislative approval is imperative, and do not give up that power, do not give up that authority. Okay? Because, I mean, that's the, the debate, even when the ten-year bill and other bills were introduced, the debate really was about how much leeway do we give? Because historically, when it was placed at a five-year limit, and beyond that required legislative approval, that stymied and discontinued any leases coming forward.
That's not true. I keep saying, plan ahead, know what you're going to do, and if it's going to be, whatever the number of years are, get it approved by the legislature. The bonds, it doesn't, they don't stop. They have to come to you and they say, "We're going to ask for three hundred and fifty or two hundred and fifty. If you're not going to give them three hundred and fifty, you can go to two fifty, you can go to four fifty." But they clear it with you first, then they go out, and then they come back to you, and you guys concur in whatever it is. But don't ever get yourselves out of the line. Always be included in the loop.
I'm not arguing with you, Speaker, you're making your point eloquently. What I'm saying is, this is the representation that has come before the legislature. So if that is untrue in your professional opinion, then we may as well just repeal both of the public laws and go for legislative approval, because that's what you're representing today.
Yes, with proper planning.
Okay. I mean, that's just so the body knows what is debating.
We wouldn't need the five hundred limit with the Attorney General for the contracts if it wasn't for the fact that people weren't, I mean, weren't getting their procurements correct. Thankfully, the prior Attorney General put a checklist together. I mean, a lot of the agencies hate the checklist, but the checklist is necessary to be able
General, do you concur basically then that we don't even need to change the law, just leave the law the way it is?
No, this is going to the question of when do contracts come before the legislature? Before, it said that it came before if it was over five years, right?
Right.
Now, the most recent amendment to it jumped it up to, they can do any lease agreement up to fifteen. So there's less oversight, there's less control, as the former speaker is indicating. That is, that is the balance of power, that it goes through you first before it's approved. So, and again, the longer-term contracts will have to go through you anyways, under the way that this is, it seems to be structured. And I see a nodding their head no. This doesn't address that issue, but it says it's void if they negotiate over fifteen years. So, you know, all I'm saying is that it's only addressing, before it was five years, anything over five had to come before you. Then it jumped to fifteen, so there's another ten years that they can add into a contract without the legislature reviewing it.
Correct.
Right. So that's a question of public policy among the legislature. If you want to enforce your authority, you could even eliminate it, you know, just require all leases to come to you.
Then that's what I'm saying. If you're concurring with former speaker and current public auditor and former justice, what you're saying is, is what he's saying is, regardless, every contract comes back to this legislature for legislative approval?
I won't go that far because it's up to you, Senator Duñez. But yes, this is the amount of years that you have to get involved in it. It's like the AG's office, we weren't touching over five hundred thousand for the autonomous agencies, but anything that hits over five hundred thousand, it's got to go through us. I see that as a check in the system. This one, the last bill that became law, removed the legislature from all those contracts below fifteen years.
So are you saying that now, then, up to fifteen years is okay without coming back to the legislature?
Under now, the way that it's worded? It seems to say fifteen years, anything under fifteen years doesn't have to go to the legislature.
That's what it says.
That's what, yeah, that's what it seems to say.
So, what this bill that's proposed in 119 is to repeal?
No, it didn't even touch that section, it talks about the fifteen.
It's going to repeal the exceptional contracts which have to come back for legislative approval.
Under D, it restores what the old law was, so put it at five years. If they have a lease that's over five years, it's got to come to the legislature for approval. Up to fifteen, I think, that's the way it looks.
That's what I'm saying. So essentially, if it restores it back to the five years, we don't even need the bill. We don't need the public law anymore.
No, no, right now, it doesn't go to you, the legislature.
Right, but this.
Up to fifteen.
So you're saying you're okay with it being up to fifteen without legislative approval?
I was asked to testify as to the impact of restoring it back to the old law. It's a positive for the legislative branch. It gives you the ability to control the money better than it is right now, because the executive can create a lease up to fifteen years without your involvement. So they can bind the people of Guam and the taxpayers for up to fifteen years without the legislature having a say in it. That's what I, how I read the current Public Law 38-1.
Yeah, General, the way this is worded and the way the OPA has interpreted this, basically, we go back to the five-year limitation, and it means anything over five years has to be approved by this legislature.
That's my understanding.
Okay, so, and that's why I'm saying that if that's the position of your office, and that's the position of the OPA's office, then essentially, we're just saying that all contracts above five years come back to the legislature for legislative approval.
I think that's the effect of the.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I mean, this is, if I may, Mr. Chair, I just want to make a comment. The bill, I mean, what we're talking about here is the same thing that happened on the session floor, you know, when our legal was trying to explain to us that anything after fifteen years will not have to go to the legislature. They're talking about, that's what it was said to us. However, in the section of law that we are bringing back in, it clearly states here that what they've done was struck out a section of law that's in the bill that I'm trying to bring back on exceptional contracts. And if you read the law on exceptional contracts and taking that out, it's as simple as anybody writing a determination of need, send it to the governor, send it to the legislature, doesn't have to have oversight, doesn't have to anything to show, that you, they can have a lease up to a hundred years if they want, fifty years if they want. You're taking away the ability on exceptional contracts. So I just want to make it clear, that's where we're going. The intent is not to go back to the legislature after fifteen years, even though I had a bill that said only ten years to allow a lease. It was agreed to on the floor to keep it at fifteen, but anything after that, that was the concern, an exceptional contracts, a simple determination of need can actually produce a contract by any governor, any director, any commission, board, just to write that determination need. And that's where, what things are spinning here in a wrong direction. So I just wanted to make that clear, so everybody understands.
I don't think I can spin anything to a former Chief Justice. I think he's pretty astute at reviewing. So let's go back to you, Mr. OP, Chief Justice. You just heard what was said. So you're testifying then on a bill that you said you support, but yet the author just said that.
Being really honest, what it does is, it does repeal 38, the intent of 38-1 of a fifteen-year exceptional contract, because you have to, and all we're saying, and why I join the former governors in their statement is, this legislature should never abdicate its authority to control and to look at these contracts, and just force the agencies to plan ahead for that need to get clearance. It doesn't have to be signed tomorrow. Plan for it if you're going to, and get it ready for, so that you know if you need forty-five days at the legislature, then have it forty-five days at the legislature, and then start your, then start negotiations.
So I didn't spin anything, this is a repeal of 38-1?
In effect, yes. I mean, truthfully, I, and I just, it will, it doesn't say repeal, but including the provision for legislative approval does, and that's why I joined the previous governors in their statement. You need to keep that power here, and abdicating it for those additional ten years, I think, was dangerous.
Regardless of whether it's a standard contract or an exceptional term, whatever contract it is? Restore the power of the legislature is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. AG, do you agree?
I'm looking at the current law, and this doesn't affect the subsection A that was enacted by the. and this doesn't affect the subsection A that was enacted by the current law. It affected subsection D. It added, I guess, back the old statute. So I think where the former speaker is coming from is where I am at. But the technical side of this on five, 10, or 15, I'm going to have to take a look at this more carefully because it does have a 10-year reference in a 15 under the current law. But the section being amended doesn't affect that section. It's only restoring back the D, subsection D of 5127.
General, can you give us an opinion based on exceptional term contract and the meaning of it when it basically, you know, explains itself in law? Because, you know, like the assertion of twisting, I actually like to consider it being clear about law. I think we need to be clear because even when the debate was on the floor, there was disagreement between members of the body on the parliamentarian definition. So I think for us to deliberate this bill properly, we need an opinion from the Attorney General explaining why an exceptional term contract is exceptional outside of a standard contract, meaning a contract that was negotiated for 15 years that doesn't have exceptional term language so that we can be clear about what we're voting on. Because right now, I've got two very distinguished esteemed individuals who clearly disagree on the intent of what we're trying to do here with this bill. And I think as you read it, you're saying the section that's being reinstated, General, is the exceptional term contract. So I'd like your testimony to be amended to give us a legal opinion from the Attorney General to define for us exceptional term contract and why that's different from any other contract.
With the materials I have in front of me, it talks about legislative proof required for exceptional term contracts, but there's no definition therein. So my deputy is basically, maybe in the markup, as this is looked at further, that there should be a clear definition of what exceptional term contract includes. Although the subsequent provisions in it, the, was it four subsequent provisions, seem to kind of explain what the title says of an exceptional term contract. So.
General, I think that's going to be very helpful for us because I think that's where we got stuck here. I think you're still going to have a diverse opinion from what the OPA is saying. I think his position, former Chief Justice, is absolute that the legislature should have legislative approval, you know, regardless. But I think your position that you're clearly stating on the record is you still believe that the contracts up to 15 years are acceptable, but not exceptional term contracts beyond 15 years, that you believe could go beyond 15 years.
The decision on whether or not a safeguard should be put in is completely within your discretion. You know, I don't think there's any legal basis in which to challenge it. So this is really a discussion among you senators. So I was just asked to give an opinion on it. I in general agree with the Speaker that the legislature cannot remove itself, should not remove itself, but it's not mine to say personally. I'm seeing things on the outside of the functioning of the three branches of our government that are very troubling on how, what we're experiencing in this time. So I'm going to say that there is, I'm seeing consistency in this, don't give up your, don't delegate your authority. It's very important to us as a community because money has been at the core of all these fights that I've been in right now. We've got an executive branch of officials, myself and the governor, that are not seeing eye to eye very much upon the money. And again, that's why I included it as an attachment. That opinion that we gave on that Department of Defense lease was all about who was going to pay for it, you know?
So General, I'm just going to say for myself, having deliberated this on the floor and having gone through the process of back and forth between our legal counsel and the parliamentarian, I have two takeaways that I'm very comfortable with now. Your explanation is clear as the Attorney General will go on, 15 years is 15 years. And that's clear in the law. That's what the law says. It can't go beyond 15 years. What we need to clear up is the attempt to repeal the exceptional term contract portion of this. You will provide a definition to this legislature of that so that we can be clear on what the differences in terms of contracts and leases are, whether it be exceptional term or term certain.
We can provide an interpretation of how we're reading it and we have no problem on that.
Okay, and so as I close with this, Mr. Chair, and I'm sorry, but I think that you can concur with me that this was the real battle and the crux on the floor about this bill and what was at the center of it. And the reason why I think that's important is I just want to get the General and the OPA's opinion on one more issue. Does any, is this legislation binding? Does it bind any legislature in the future? Meaning if you got to the 15 years and wanted to eliminate exceptional term contracts, you could do it by a matter of law? Just like we're sitting here trying to repeal this section right now. It's not binding, right?
Every legislature can do whatever it's going to do in the future.
So I think, so I think in the spirit of this, General, and I'm glad we had this discussion, I think that that's what this body and this committee has to deliberate is the strict definition of exceptional term contract as it was listed in the original piece of legislation and also that the 15 years is the 15 years. And what would be the essence of repealing exceptional term contract? Would that be just that form of contract? And other contracts basically could be approved, not with legislative approval for up to 15 years? Is that a reasonable request?
Yes.
General?
Yes, we can take a look at that, yes.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duaneus. We're then, Senator Sinagasin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for the OPA and the Attorney General for being here. You know, I know you all have a copy of the bill. And if you look at page two of the bill, everybody's going to be wrapped around all the different contracts, maybe one year, two years, five years. It doesn't matter to me. I'm looking at the bill. And if you look at line nine, and nine, it talks about what public law 38-1 states. Line is, Simon's created pathway. And I believe the intent of this bill is to restore legislature's oversight after 15 years. That's how I'm understanding this bill. And if you can correct me, Attorney General, if that's how you saw it and that's how you came here to testify? Because it was, everything was after 15 years. But the legislature is brought back into the picture to make sure that don't just let the agency just do what they want after 15 years. That's what my understanding is. That is, that would be considered after 15 plus a second or a day. It's considered exceptional, comes back to the legislature. That's what I understand on this bill. Now, you can correct me if this, if you see it differently, if you say it differently, then please explain. How is it different? Because we go back to what my colleague Senator Duaneus brought up, was the definition of exceptional term contracts. The only thing I can see is the definition is anything after 15 years. Unless you can see something else, because you said it earlier, there's no definition. So the only thing that can be considered exceptional contract would be after line nine, 15 years. Nothing more. And then you can comment, Attorney General.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it, but right now, this, again, this didn't touch the subsection A. It only went after D that was repealed. So it reinstated the, I presume this language may have been the old language. So it doesn't, exceptional term contracts is, is.
It's not visible.
It doesn't give a clear number of years.
All right, and thank you for both of you for being here, Mr. Speaker.
No.
Go ahead.
And this is just the reason why I didn't appear or comment at the last, during the, before or during the last debate. It's, the authority remains with you guys to make that decision. I am no longer a member of the legislature. I'm just saying, as a citizen, please protect the power of the legislature.
Understood. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Sinagasin. Go ahead and recognize Senator Jelahi here. You're recognized, ma'am. Thank you.
Sidoz Masi, thank you for testifying. I totally agree with both of you. I completely agree that the legislature should not abdicate its power. There's no need to do that. There was a process in place for longer leases. And even Senator Ada, who was referred to earlier, testified that that worked well. When they did the cement on contract, they brought it in here. It was for 30 years and they were able to prove to the legislature and got more than the 25 years they were asking for because they proved that it was a great deal for the people of Guam. And then he even said in his testimony before he ended that that worked well. It was a good arrangement. And in lieu of legislative review, the legislature should establish what the parameters are if we were going to waive legislative review because that was the bill that was in front of us. And, but this bill that was passed had no parameters. It in fact continued to allow in 5127, section B, for exceptional term contracts in B and C. But it just removed D where the legislature's approval was required for those exceptional term contracts. So 5127B says that the purchasing agency may solicit a term for longer than otherwise allowed by this section, which now is 15 years. And prior to that, they send notice to the, they must make a written determination of need justifying a quantifiable sum and specifying the full term and provide the other details to the Speaker of the Legislature. And a determination of need must be obtained from the governor or the autonomous agency's board of directors. And it shall be published. And after that, they remove the legislative approval. So right now, the law that has been adopted by this body, over my objection, was that now we have 15-year contracts that are allowed. Plus, we have, if you want to go over 15 years, you just publish that information that I described. That's it. And you can go over 15 years. You don't, that's it. And so there was an amendment on the floor proffered trying to object to, I mean, trying to restore this language right here where we're going to at least get legislative approval for anything over 15 years. That debate was cut off with a motion for the previous question where almost all senators, except for the sponsors of this bill, supported that motion to cut off the debate on that. But, so this bill that's before us right now, Bill 119, to restore legislative approval of exceptional contracts which exceed 15 years. Of course, I support, that's better than no legislative oversight at all. But I totally agree with you that five-years contracts did not prohibit any agency from coming in here and putting out to the public why they needed a longer term, planning in advance, saying we need longer terms for these types of leases on these types of areas, putting that out to the public and getting a consensus, showing, showing anything. Whereas right now, as the law is, as someone said earlier, they can go up to 100 years, a century, two centuries, so many things that they can do. But we can't even predict what is going to happen, what our needs are going to be at that time. And one person or one board member making that decision for all of the people of Guam, I feel is completely inappropriate. Even the 15 of us, maybe not enough to make that decision, right? To predict the future, what we will need in 30 years, whether this land should be made available again in 30 years for something better, for a better deal or for something that we actually really need then because of changing technology and other things. But, so I completely support that we put back legislative approval for exceptional term contracts in excess of 15 years. But I also completely support what you have said. I wish you were here when we were doing this bill and the other bill because it was, we have really created by the two bills, this and the airport bill, a free-for-alls where not even the governor's approval is necessary on the airport's leases for, I think, up to 50 years. So again, thank you very much for your testimony. Thank you for outlining what is at risk for the people of Guam, what they have given up by these, by the current law that was passed just recently by the legislature. And I want to thank the sponsor for putting this bill forward. I had kind of given up hope, but she continued to have hope and she pursuing this. And I'm very glad to have your testimony today. Sidoz Masi. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Jelahi. Senator Barnett here, recognizing, before you start, sir, I'd just like to recognize Senator Gumatato for being here this afternoon as well. Thank you. Senator Barnett?
Sidoz Masi, Mr. Chair. Bunnison off a date to the panel present. Sidoz Masi, Attorney General Moylan, Public Auditor Cruz, thank you very much. To agree with the retiring Speaker, I wish you guys were here a lot more because some of my colleagues, they really like to throw your name out there, especially you, public auditor. They like to say, oh, public auditor said this, public auditor likes that. Well, they go into the opposite when we're on the floor. It was my amendment that I proffered when we entertained Bill 8, which is now public law 38-1. And the amendment that I proffered at the time sought to reinstate legislative approval for exceptional term contracts, which as we've now sorted out, were defined in the statute as contracts exceeding the number of years stated in, I think, of section A. So the number of years is 15. And so I take it that public law 38-1 absolutely gives these agencies the ability to enter into leases that are up to 15 years and even beyond because we struck out completely the legislature's authority and ability to scrutinize these exceptional term contracts. And ironically, this morning, we were across the hall talking about the Organic Act and the 75th anniversary of the Organic Act and the very real abilities and authorities that this legislature was given via that Organic Act. And these authorities and abilities, which some of my colleagues are all too quick to whittle away in the name of special interest. And that's really what it's about. I'm not sure if we're even in the same session because that's exactly what it was about. And you're right, public auditor, all it takes is planning. La tazap plan, le che flan. Because I'll tell you how these deals come about. These agencies, they go off-island to these conferences and they meet people and then they come back. And they realize they can't get what these people want and what they want through our procurement. So they come here to the legislature and they say, oh, Senator, can you please introduce this special interest legislation? And I agree absolutely, Attorney General, with your testimony. Every single word of it, pretty much, except the part where you say that we need a strong Republican majority to keep this executive branch in check. Only because if you look at the voting record, this Republican majority, I don't think has been keeping this administration in check. I mean, if you look at the amendment that I proffered and the motion that was made to kill the debate on that amendment, that amendment, that motion, wouldn't have passed without the support of a majority of the good members of the GOP. And you know, I don't make no gripe either way. I don't support. I'm not a party person, but I just wanted to clear that record that, you know, sure, the people of Guam thought they elected more checks and balances, but you know, sitting in here in this 38 Guam legislature, I'm not entirely sure that's the case. And so I agree, public auditor, all we're saying is to these agencies, you know, plan ahead. Plan ahead because we saw even with this airport bill, and I think it's a little funny that the governor signed into law Bill 8, which she, and I'm pulling this from her signing message. She said, oh, it was business friendly and, oh, the legislature, they have too much political agenda and we can't subject the businesses to that. And then she goes and allows Bill 67, which does that and more worse to be lapsed into law. So I quite totally been confused. And so absolutely, this bill, all it does is reinstate the legislature's authority to review exceptional term contracts, which according to my read is any contract that is above 15 years. And we agreed on 15 years because that was a compromise down from 30 years. My colleagues in the 38 Guam legislature, the ones who are supposed to be the check and ballots on the executive branch, they wanted to give 30-year leases. They wanted to give 30-year leases with no scrutiny by the senators. with no scrutiny by the senators. And maybe that's because some of them are planning to be governor. And they don't want the scrutiny from this body. So let's not try and muddy the water and try and confuse one of the great, two of the great legal minds in our community by your revisionist history of what actually occurred in the session when we debated the measure. And I remember, I was shocked. We were looking through the bill, and, oh my God, they took out the whole section that allows us to approve these exceptional term contracts. And so, yes, I wish you two were here more, so you can teelick these guys' ears whenever they start to go off the track, because there's plenty times off the track. It's like we've been off-roading the whole term. So Sidos Masi, I'm very grateful for your support of the measure. And I just ask my colleagues to remember this. Remember the testimony that was given here today. Remember it, because a lot of times, whatever's said in here, when we get over there across the hall, Lana, they forgot everything already. Sidos Masi, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Senator Barnett. Senator Perez, you're recognized, ma'am. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's hard to come after that. But I'm really happy that the sponsor of this bill allowed me to co-sponsor this. It's really about putting an important safeguard into having to deal with land leases. And to me, you know, land is one of our most valuable assets here. And to allow exceptional term contracts without any oversight here at the legislature, which I think land is one of our primary, you know, responsibilities here at the legislature, oversight of land, in addition to procurement. And so I think it's really critical to hold on to our responsibilities in looking after the public trust. And I think this is a responsible measure, a common sense measure, that would protect the public trust. It's more about, it's, you know, when you're reenacting something that was repealed, which is Section, subsection D, it does nothing to change the definition of an exceptional contract, but it just adds a safeguard back in that existed before, which I'm in full support of. I have no questions for the panel, and I do appreciate, you know, your participation and your ability to engage us here today. So Sidos Masi.
Thank you, Senator Perez. I'd just like to recognize Speaker Blas. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Speaker. Senator Gumatato, you're recognized, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for the panel for being here, and I apologize for my tardiness. It's 2025, and let me just do a little bit, if I go back if I could a bit. Bill 6932, which was enacted as Public Law 32-40, 040, on June 11, 2013, without the governor's signature. The intent of that public law was to establish a standard for leasing government of Guam real property that would have improved transparency and clarity in the leasing of public property and to ensure that exceptional term contracts with terms greater than five years be scrutinized by the Guam legislature. Mr. Chair, Public Law 32-40 provided that if the Guam legislature takes no action within 60 calendar days from the date of filing with the Speaker, the commercial contract lease permit or license shall be deemed approved by the Guam legislature. The public hearing, or a public hearing, shall be conducted by the Guam legislature during the 60-day review period. Legislative approval shall be enacted into law. Legislative disapproval shall be by resolution. Mr. Chair, the provisions of Public Law 32-40 was amended by Bill 34-34, which is now Public Law 3499, which also lapsed into law on May 16, 2018, without the governor's signature. Among the amendments, Mr. Chair, authorized by Public Law 34-99, was the removal of a provision deeming a commercial contract lease permit or license to be approved if the Guam legislature takes no action within 60 calendar days from the date of filing with the Speaker. If approved, this bill does not apply to certain government properties, including residential and agricultural leases to beneficiaries under the Chamorland Trust and the properties administered by the University of Guam, which was allowed by Public Law 34-114, enacted in December of 2020, to enter lease agreements for a period of up to 30 years. For reference, Bill 67-38 became public law in June 2025, Mr. Chair, and among its provisions include an authorization, I think we talked about it in this hearing, for the Guam International Airport Authority to lease any portion of its real property and facilities for a period of up to 50 years, subject to FAA requirements and GIAA policies and procedures. In her June 17, 2025, message to us here at the Guam legislature, again, which became Public Law 3821, the governor wrote that Bill 67-38 will lapse into law without her signature, and the GIAA will be permitted to proceed with drafting policies and procedures for its concession requirements or procurements and facilities contracts. However, its policies and procedures shall be subject to the requirements set forth in an executive order she would issue within a week of the bill's enactment, containing the important guardrails Bill 67 is silent on. Well, the governor further wrote, she would require GIAA to abide by the instructions set out in that executive order to ensure the integrity of the procurement process and restore public confidence in the airport's procurements. I'm not really sure that even came out. With that said, recognizing Bill 119-38 seeks to reestablish legislative guardrails specifically for exceptional term contracts beyond 15 years, what information is available regarding the executive order referenced in her message in Public Law 38-21? And what impact, if any, could an executive order have in guiding the legislature's review of exceptional term contracts if, in fact, this bill is approved moving forward? Anybody in the panel can tell me if that executive order ever happened? Help me understand. Attorney General?
I haven't tracked that. You're talking about the airport authority?
Yeah.
The GIA? I'm not aware of the history of what happened after the public law was passed. You're saying that public law was passed on that? That's my understanding.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
I have all my colleagues that are talking all this stuff, but I mean, I'm just trying to ask a question, if you know what happened.
I'm sorry, I don't know if any executive order has been issued.
No, thank you, thank you, former speaker. And thank you again for being here. Because public law, I'm just going to go to my second question, because public law from the 34th Guam legislature included a provision allowing for an exceptional term contract to be deemed approved by the Guam legislature if the legislature takes no action within 60 calendar days from the date of filing with the Speaker, what policy ideas should senators consider as an amendment to Bill 119-38 as a way to require the legislature to accept or reject an exceptional term contract without unnecessary delays?
The law already provides under this bill the defaults, right? That if it sits in the legislature, it defaults into approval. That's...
So we don't foresee delays in trying to pull these off? And I don't think it was directed at anyone specifically, but...
Right. Quite frankly, having served as legislative counsel for six years, I don't really think the delay is, that's being purported, is a problem. Everybody understands it needs legislative approval. There's a default to approval if the legislature doesn't act. And I've never really seen a problem with that. So I think the key question is this whole, and by the way, for an earlier question, the exceptional term contracts, as was, I think, the Senator Tiedegui pointed it out. It's, and we'll give an legal opinion on that issue, but I think it's over 15 years. That's the category of what exceptional term contract is. So, yeah. It's purely within the legislative discretion, what it wishes to do, what safeguards it wishes to make. You know, I'd lower it back down if I were you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Attorney General Moylan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Gumatato. Speaker Blas, you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I apologize for my tardiness as well, but I will tell you that while doing some work in my office, I was tuned into YouTube. I appreciate the testimony provided by you, Speaker Cruz and Attorney General Moylan. And I agree wholeheartedly with the concern and the need to be able to ensure that there's guardrails and that there's some legislative, for lack of a better term oversight, with regard to, in this case, what is an exceptional term contract? Or in those areas of exceptional term contract? It is my understanding that exceptional term contract is anything after 15 years, which is the exception. Okay, so as is recognized, I am a co-sponsor to this piece of legislation. I as well believe that, you know, we shouldn't abscond our responsibility to be able to do this. I do, I recognize and I appreciate the arguments that were set forth on the floor with regards to some of the confusion as to what it was. And glad that this bill hopes to clarify that single question that we were, that we were concerned about when the deliberation of the previous bill, which now is law, is taking place. And so I ought to, just but to be for the sake of clarity and for the sake of being succinct, I would appreciate, too, the interpretation that your office, Mr. Attorney General, is going to be provided based on, Senator, my colleagues' request on this. Other than that, Mr. Chair, I really don't have any questions for the panel. I do recognize and appreciate their being here and their testimony on this bill. And I look forward to his hopeful passage. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Speaker Blas. I'll go ahead and recognize Senator Tiedegui for closing. You don't have any closing? No, you're good? Oh, no, you can go ahead and close.
Okay.
That's the advantage of being a chair.
I just don't want to leave you out, Vice Speaker. First, I want to thank the governors for their testimony and then the importance of keeping the checks and balances they spoke about. I mean, these are former governors. I mean, if they were in their, I think if any of them were in their position right now as being governor, would still understand the importance of checks and balances. It was brought up by my colleague, Senator Barnett. You know, I think he stole one of my sections of my closing, and that was the event that we had across the hallway for the Organic Act of Guam signing, 75 years. And it was, I mean, everybody was spellbound when Attorney Mike Phillips was talking about the importance and how our forefathers fought so hard to ensure that the legislature keeps its power and the importance of that. That was, it was, it was so enlightening, inspiring. Because, believe it or not, ladies and gentlemen, there are senators who sit here and want the best for the people of Guam. They're not out for themselves. We want to do the checks and balances to make sure that we get the best bang for the buck for the people of Guam. There are senators that sit here and want to do that. I want to thank my co-sponsors, Speaker Blas, and of course, Senator Trelawhy Barnett, Sabina Perez, as well as Shelley Cavell, for understanding the importance of this measure, of keeping the checks and balances. And just for the listening audience, because at the beginning of this public hearing, or into it, when the conversation started with one of my colleagues, it just became more confusing. I got texts coming, saying that, what are they talking? Wait a minute, this, explain again, explain it. I'm trying to pay attention to my colleagues and listening to their concerns at the same time answering this question. And it's as simple as this. In the Guam Code annotated, in section or Title V, Chapter V, Section 5127, in bolded letters, it says, "Commercial leasing of public real property and related facilities." And that's how the chapter begins. It discusses it. Then it goes down to all the requirements that's needed, real property, related facilities from effective date of this law. Goes on to read, it talks, "Any contract lease permitted or license may be renewed, extended, and in violation of this law shall become void." It goes further down, and it talks about all the do's and don'ts of a lease in a property. And then it gets to Section 10, I mean, Section D of the chapter. And it says, "Legislative approval required for exceptional term contracts, subject to satisfying the requirements of this 5127. The commercial contract, lease permit, or license for use of public real property and related facilities shall be submitted to the legislature for approval or disapproval in whole." And then earlier, my colleagues talked about, you know, the 60 days had to automatically become law if we don't address it. But what the bill that was passed earlier, which I'm here today to amend, not repeal, to remend, to place it back in there, is Bill 119, the bill we're talking about today. I mean, that's as simple as I can put it. I did have an opportunity to talk to one of the governors, and they felt, too, that five years was actually quite low. And in the 35th Guam legislature, and again, in the 37th, I believe, I introduced legislation to increase that from five to 10 years. As a business owner, I know how difficult it is to recover what you have, your initial investment it takes. And they agree to, because they understand that you basically can't really recover in five years. So my intention was not to eliminate that, 15 years. Actually, if I could, I'd take back to 10. But for the sake, for the sake of moving forward, it was agreed upon on 15. Maybe that's another, another body. Maybe that happened, hopefully, someone in the 39th Guam legislature. Right, BJ, that will make that happen? To any contracts, I know. That everything has to go through the legislature. But again, Mr. Chair, it's as simple as that. It's just restoring the checks and balances in this government. And I thank you for hearing this legislation and again, appreciate my co-sponsors. And I, hopefully, on this session floor, I'll get the co-sponsorship requests from all the rest of my other colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I mean, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Senator Tiedegui. And yes, you know, we did have a public hearing as soon as we possibly can for this bill, and that was upon your schedule. And I think checks and balances works both ways, right, for both the legislature and the administration and within our body itself. And that's why I always try to do the best I can to conduct public hearings on all the bills that come through my committees. When I do that, I think that we do a justice for our people. You know, it's not one person, and it was said so eloquently, you know? It's not one person to decide. And just like this legislative body, it's not one person to decide what bills get heard and not heard, what goes to the floor. What goes to the floor has to be heard by all the members. So as long as we get the passage of going into the, the committee reports get marked up and go to the Committee on Rules meeting and gets the eight votes to hit the session agenda, and so be it, and all 15 members will be able to vote on it. So thank you all for your testimony this afternoon. I know it took a little bit longer, but I'm glad that we got you guys first and out of the way. And with that being said, if there are no further question or comments, this concludes the public hearing for Bill 119-38COR. And now we will go ahead and go into Bill Number 7-38COR, introduced by Senator Joseph Augustine. And I'll go ahead and give the senator his opening remarks. And we'll go ahead and call Mr. Herrera to the table, Mr. Swaveley to the table. And we'll go ahead and call Mr. Herrera to the table, Mr. Swaveley to the table. Then also, we have on Zoom with Mr. Carlos Camacho. Mr. Cruz, will you be coming to the table to testify on this piece of legislation?
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Tan, for being present as well. And to your two interns that are at CLTC, welcome to the Guam Legislature. Senator Sinagusin, you're recognized, sir.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon to all colleagues and to the people of Guam. Thank you for hearing this bill. Bill 7-38 is my third introduction of this measure, the first time in the 36th Guam Legislature. The Chamor Land Trust Commission is, and this bill is authorized to, among other things, lease or license for commercial use certain properties in its land inventory. Further, commercial leases or licenses may occur only if CLTC designated lands not exceed 9% of the total remaining unassigned CLTC land area inventory. And may include mineral extraction when specifically approved by the CLTC and the legislature, and must be awarded through a competitive bid process to entities determined to be responsible and responsive. It is no secret that CLTC currently has a backlog of applicants for homestead lots as well as multimillion-dollar shortfall to survey new homestead lots and improve them with access and utilities. So what does this bill do? This bill intends to allow inaccessible and underdeveloped large portion of Lot 5412 Mangila, an area between the Gloria B. Nelson Public Service Building and the coastline that contains quality limestone aggregate for construction purposes, and it authorizes CLTC to go out for a bid on this area for quarrying. We know that prudent planned extraction of aggregate on this lot can result in a landform that can accommodate hundreds of homestead lots, as well as a large pad for another public service building. Inasmuch as Guam's construction industry now requires approximately 1.5 million cubic yards of limestone aggregate per year, and the current market rate for quality limestone is approximately $2 per cubic yard, maybe more now, extraction operation at this lot may potentially yield up to $1 million. That estimate was six years ago. And the amount of money they can generate will be for the, during the next six years. Ultimately, Bill 7 will cause the CLTC to issue an invitation for bid for the development of CLTC Lot 5412 Mangila with a plan to assist the CLTC accomplish three objectives. First, generate approximately $6 million in revenue. I remind you, this is more than four years, about six years ago when we were estimating this. But with the cost of it now, should be double, if not even more, hopefully, in revenues through the sale of limestone aggregate. Second, create a sustainable revenue source by leasing a pad for a new public service building. And third, and probably most important, creating new homestead lots. Mr. Chair, I look forward to hearing the testimony, and we'll work closely with you and the community to work toward building our island and providing much-needed lots to help our families. Thank you. Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Sinagusin, and signed up on the list. We'll go ahead and hear from Mr. David Herrera.
Buenos dias, Vice Speaker and Speaker. I salute the honourable senators and senators who have been here today. In the end, I would like to say that I am here today to give my testimonies to the bill, 7-038, by whom I would like to express my gratitude and appreciation. Bill Number 7-038COR, introduced by the Honorable Senator Joe Sinagusin, an act to repeal and reenact a new subsection 75122C2 and add a new subsection 75122D and subsection 75122E to Chapter 75 of Title 21 Guam Code Annotated relative to requiring the Chamor Land Trust to solicit competitive bids for the mass grading and mineral extraction of a portion of Lot 5412 Imagan Fadian Mangila. I understand that the military buildup caused a major demand for these minerals to support the final development of the construction of Camp Blas, plus the major upgrades and hardening of the facilities in Big Navy, Sumai, Upper Harbor, Glass Break Water, Fena Naval Mac Anderson Air Force Base, and other related areas around our island. I am also equally concerned about the development and construction for our 30,000 Chamor Land Trust constituents, plus the 2,800 lessees that have leases in hand, and hundreds that are still waiting for the infrastructure and construction of affordable homes. The high local demand and limited supply of high-quality limestone mineral will also hurt our lessees when constructing a home on CLTC properties. Today's high cost of a basic three-bedroom home is about $250 per square foot and rising. Guam has a shortage of approximately 8,000 homes to accommodate the current demand. This is one major component that we in the Chamor Land Trust Commission and the Guam Legislature would need to innovate and develop a high-volume cash flow, but also to lower the cost of construction that will be the economic multiplier for our community. Currently, before my departure as a commissioner in the, Commissioner in January of 2025, we already have a giggle lot ready for RFP, and we also have track 319 with 211 lots leased since 1997, which is shovel-ready, and about 4,000 of former land for the landless lots in the CLTC inventory that requires infrastructure to be pad-ready for a home to be constructed. Again, the honorable senators in the 37th Guam Legislature, under the leadership of Speaker Attorney Trista Lahey and Senator Joe Sinagusin appropriated $9 million to the infrastructure and survey funds. Positive cash flow generated from Bill 7-38 will augment this amount to support the current program that Team CLTC is actively producing under the Administrative Director of Joey B. Cruz, the Chairwoman Arlene Burdahlou, Commissioner Gorrido, and the new Commissioners, Shinott Cameron, Jeremy Rojas, and Shinora Fabrin Cruz, Rispishu. In closing, I do support Bill Number 7-38. Donkulu, Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera, for your testimony this afternoon. Mrs. Swaveley, you can go ahead and go present your testimony, sir.
I can speak tomorrow.
That's allowed, sir. Turn on your microphone. Just turn on your microphone. Thank you, sir.
I am Dan Swaveley from Tuamán, testifying in favor of Bill 738. By way of brief background, I've been in the land use planning and real estate development business for more than 50 years on Guam. I have represented dozens of developers and contractors and currently consult for Hawaiian Rock Products and Smithbridge Guam. My testimony will focus on generic Guam land use planning and how the intent of this bill is good for everyone. In general, we all do a good job with land use planning. The process for reviewing and adjudicating new development is robust and transparent. Proposed projects are scrutinized by several agencies of the government, and most new applications require up to five public hearings. Of course, several areas of processing are still open for improvement, but they are being addressed regularly with various levels of success. Note, however, that all this history refers to private property development, not public property development. Despite being the second-largest single landowner, Gov Guam properties have a different development This is neither unusual nor necessarily wrong, as well as common among other similar jurisdictions. We should recognize that public properties exist within a different, within different development paradigms in that they are bound to the objective of achieving public good in accordance with strict legal mandate. In my view, this makes public land use planning much more difficult than private land use planning. For example, take just one mandate of the Chamor Land Trust, that of homestead development. The trust's options cannot be equated to those of a private subdivision developer because the economics are all different. The trust has very few financial resources to develop homestead lots so as to assure they are efficiently planned with infrastructure and community amenities to meet the needs of the residents. Today's cost of such a single, surveyed, fully improved homestead lot is likely in the range of $70,000 to $90,000, depending on the proximity of public facilities. That is the reality of the trust commission, the trust mission. Now, along comes a temporary, yet basically perfect, set of unexpected circumstances. Please consider this. Several of the trust's undeveloped properties, particularly those to the east of Route 15, contain high-quality limestone aggregate, actually among the best on Guam. And number two, the best means of converting those steeply sloping properties is to mass grade into benches that will accommodate regular-size homestead lots. And three, such mass grading generates large volumes of excess limestone aggregate. Four, the current construction industry on Guam needs such large quantities of this particular limestone aggregate. Five, those contractors will pay a premium price for that aggregate, plus perform the mass grading, including necessary design and permitting activities. Lastly, this opportunity provides the economic resource that the trust has been missing because the sale of limestone aggregate can finance the proper development of homestead lots for eligible applicants. That is the simple and public good intent of Bill 738. It will create fully improved, mortgageable residential properties for housing for eligible homestead applicants at a record pace. No trust expenditures, no pricey economics of a private subdivision, and everyone benefits because we have created more housing, particularly for those who deserve it the most. Bill 738 is good for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swaveley, for your testimony this afternoon. Also, we have on Zoom Mr. Carlos Camacho, who would like to also submit his testimony. Mr. Camacho, you're recognized, sir, for your, to present your testimony.
All right, let me just get my bearings.
I believe you're still on mute. Can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we still can't hear you. AB, is there any volume issue inside? Go ahead, Mr. Camacho, you can try.
Yeah, I'm out, I'm out. Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Okay. Well, let me get, because it's my late night, I'm in the opposite side of the internet.
If you can just stand by, Mr. Camacho, I think we're having issues on your, on your volume there on your side. If you can just try to...
Yeah. What about now? Can you hear me?
That's better. There you go, sir.
You gotta lean closer, maybe to the mic. Okay.
Thank you.
Again, just, my name is Carlos Camacho. I'm the Executive Director for Micronesia Community Development Corporation. We're a affordable housing advocate. We look at many different ways to provide affordable housing access to our families in Guam, as policies that your body passed and as policies that the federal government passed. When this bill came about, I wanted to see if I could add some ideas and recommendation, only recommendation, if it doesn't impact whoever the vendor is that is going to be bidding on this for the extraction, as what was described by Mr. Swaveley, on a very high prime limestone type of material. And I wanted to provide a couple of ideas. And just to make it clear, I'm not sure my ideas may be germane to this public Bill 7-38, but I'm going to go and say it, so at least it's in the record. And if it's non-german, then hopefully one of the senators up there can probably introduce such an idea I'll be incorporating by using this resource to Chamor Land Trust. It was stated by, it was stated by former CLTC member, Mr. Herrera, that there is thousands of land trust recipients that one day will probably build their homes. And through the 37th, and hopefully the 38th, and this bill will probably give them the financial resources now to develop these pad-ready lots so that these families can finally move forward and build their homes. It was also stated that cost of construction is expensive in Guam. So I submitted a written testimony, but I'm going to go ahead and do the narrative part because it's getting late from here. So one of the ideas I got, subject to being germane or not, is to create a lifeline rate. A lifeline rate is to be targeted towards three categories. And the first category is to be available to all Chamor Land Trust leaseholders in their organization, and that's over 2,900 of them, as Mr. Herrera described, and over 8,000 or 3,000 that Acting Administrator and their team right now is processing to try to move forward now that they got some seed money to improve some of their lots. The lifeline rate will help reduce the costs of construction on materials only. And basically, on the material base, you have crush aggregate, sand, mortar, and hollow blocks, and concrete mix, all made from the extraction of this resource. We all know that it's all going majority to the big demand because that's where it is, as described by Mr. Herrera, in all the military projects, which is okay. That's to sustain the economic and the process. But since we're using a government resource, I wanted to put a lifeline rate. Now, to better that lifeline rate, so that the vendor, whoever bids in it, does not get impacted on whatever discount, as I propose, a 15% to 25% discount, as long as it doesn't hurt their financial resource, operation, would tie that into a QC, a qualifying certificate. Under the qualifying certificate, under GIDA, anything is considered under manufacturing. I consider this, on my point of view, of taking limestone aggregate mineral and converting it in the batching plant through sand, as I described, concrete, hollow block, and crush, crush a base course that's needed for every home. If a lifeline rate is created, then it's targeted again to Chamor Land Trust. And in my testimony that I submitted, there were two other targets that will be available for the lifeline rate. The other targets will be the families out there on non-Chamor land that meet the affordable housing definition, as I described in there, under HUD, between 50% to 150% area median income. And third, developers. I'm a developer. There's other developers that would like to develop affordable housing. We would like to have access to a lifeline rate so we can reduce the cost of our product to help meet these targeted income. Now, in my own testimony also, as I asked if we can include the lifeline rate provision, we want to include an opportunity for a QC provision. On the QC, it's not only related to the minerals extracted from Lot 5412, it is... Now, in my own testimony also, as I asked if we can include the lifeline rate provision, we want to include an opportunity for a QC provision. On the QC, it's not only related to the minerals extracted from Lot 5412. It is, since they may get a QC for a blanket benefit for their overall income, whoever that vendor is, then we wanted to make sure that the extended resources, not only from 5412, but any other resources that's going to that batching and operational plan to create these products, as I described, will be part of the lifeline rate. So at the end of the day, this will help some value learned on the cost benefiting the CLTC recipients, building their new home, or expanding their home, and the families out there that want to build on their own lot. As Mr. Herrera described, the land for the landless, which is not Chamor Land Trust, there's a bunch of people that got these leased land for 2,500, but the cost of construction, they're not able to move forward. And this is just one mechanism, and many that you guys passed historically, many different QC's. I'm just hoping that we can, if it is germane, that we can create the lifeline rate. And in my own submission, I also put an opt-in and opt-out provision. I don't want any vendor to be obligated to say, "Oh, my God, I have to do this lifeline because it's part of the law." I'm also giving them the flexibility to opt-in and opt-out, on my opinion, because at the end of the day, it would be a good, positive karma for whoever that vendor is, providing this back to the community. And hopefully, if they get their QC, they get the QC economic tax exemption to recover some of their loss of providing these lifeline rate. So at the end of the day, Mr. Chairman, Senator Adda, Senator Sonagstein, I do support 7-38. It provides a financial resource to Chamor Land Trust. And as I read the bill also, it does not leave the property as was left in previous properties that was not available to be used as a homestead. This one has the checks and balances that I recall reading the bill on regards to it being protected to be converted back to homestead. And if I'm not mistaken, there is now a weigh station in, somewhere there, that the materials will be weighed accordingly so that Chamor Land Trust will get its best bang for its buck. And as Senator Sonoxin stated, this value was done four, five, six years ago, and maybe Joey Cruz and his team will put that up and say, "Let's see what the new value is," and maybe the 6 million, 6 million won't be 6, maybe it'll be 6, 9, 12, 13, whatever that number is. By the end of the day, it is a good financial resource for Chamor Land Trust to further develop their undeveloped lots, as what former Speaker Therese, Joe Sonoxin, and the 37th did on the surplus money, the 9 million, that's there to seek some improvement of the property. So if you do that, now what do we do on the vertical side? How do we help them lower that cost? So I'm just throwing in the idea of the lifeline, and I hope you, the members there, will consider that, if it's germane. If it's not germane, then I look forward on someone introducing another policy for lifeline rate. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and I stand aside for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho, for your testimony this afternoon. And perhaps, I'll go ahead and just say, the majority of your testimony is perhaps germane to this issue, and I think maybe the only part that would be questionable would be the QC, but other than that, thank you, we appreciate your testimony. I'm gonna go ahead and open up the questioning and comments from my colleagues, and I'll start out with the Vice Chair of the Committee, Senator Duñez. You're recognized, Senator.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to thank Signor David Herrera for his testimony, and also to Mr. Dan Swaveley and Carlos Camacho. You have been really at the forefront, Carlos, of opportunities for affordable housing, so thank you for all you've done over the years and continue to do. Mr. Chair, I support this legislation, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Swaveley. You know, when I was the Guam Housing Corporation President, this was one of the dreams, really, and I see Joey Cruz has just come back in the room. You know, the one thing that Department of Land Management, Chamor Land Trust, really, and the Guam Housing Corporation, if there's anything that is, you know, the trinity, really, of trying to crack this, this, you know, this seal of opening up opportunities for affordable housing, it really is that, those entities, and they are always and have always constantly looked for opportunities to ensure that Chamor Land Trust properties can get the infrastructure and the improvements. And really, like I said, that is the trinity, because you've got Land Management with their team who does surveys and does other work. And then, of course, you know, you have the Guam Land Trust Commission, which really is the recipient of those, of that generosity. And then the Guam Housing Corporation that needs, because they are really the primary and somewhat only, other than pairing with other financial institutions as being, you know, the primary, to be able to really realize construction of suitable homes on Guam to be built for our people that are resilient against weather and other perils. So I think this is one of the dreams coming true, that you have a real kind of a win-win situation where you get, you know, the revenue from the aggregate and from the, you know, the minerals that are being extracted, but then the leftover there also, and this was and has been the dream, is a piece of property that is now usable without no investment from the government in terms of having to get the expense of infrastructure improvement, and with everything being available and prepared, and also on top of that, receiving the revenue from, you know, that said, you know, extraction. So thank you for bringing this proposal forward. Senator Sonagstein, I'd like to be a co-sponsor, and I think as this goes forward, aside from the other subdivisions that have already been identified for, you know, infrastructure improvements and the opportunity for subdivisions to be realized, this would just be an absolute multiplier and a complement to that. The difference is, is that in those, we're trying to find the money to ensure that that can be done. In this, it's really a 2-4, if you will. You get the money from the aggregate, and you also get the site preparation to help our families going forward. So that's all I have, is just a few comments. Mr. Chairman, this is something that has been contemplated for well over a decade or more, and so I'm appreciative that the legislation's come forward. Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duñez. I'll go ahead and recognize Senator Taidewi.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much, everyone, for testifying today. And Hafaday, Carlos, if you're still listening, it's always good to see you. You know, I'm kind of curious how Chamor Land Trust is going to monitor the compliance of this. That's, I guess, you know, Mr. Herrera, do you know how they would be able to monitor this whole project? I mean, what funding will it take? And would EPA be involved in this?
All the regulatory bodies would be involved on the clearing, grading, and all the permitting process. But to metric, to monitor the volume that comes out from that property, we've learned from the operation from the Guam Racing Federation, and at least I learned something from that operation, that there was extreme excavation or extraction, and GIDA was supposed to monitor the operation. But then again, in hindsight, we can say that we were responsible. When I say "we," the Chamor Land Trust is responsible to have oversight on all the properties, which is one-third of the island. So what I learned from that operation is that we left the fox to guard the hen house, shall we say. And what's, when I'm reading this bill, I can see that there's gonna be a station to weigh, a weigh station. So with today's technology, every cubic yard that goes out in that property can be weighed and scaled and documented. That's one automated system. The other one is having a scale system with a physical person to monitor.
And will there be someone from Chamor Land Trust, or will you hire a company on your behalf?
We can do a hybrid. We can have a company and then have, in my idea at least, have the Chamor Land Trust to have oversight of monitoring the company.
Mr. Herrera, just, just so that we're clear, right? You're just speaking on your own personal reconnaissance, right? Not as a member of the Chamor Land Trust Commission?
Yes, no, no, yeah.
Perhaps maybe we can have the Acting Administrator, Mr. Cruz, to please come forward?
Yeah, thank you.
And that way, there's no confusion, and we just get clear.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Senator. I apologize.
No worries, Mr. Chair. Does he have a testimony he would like to provide, or do I just continue with it?
The Chamor Land Trust will be submitting testimony as they will be discussing this at their next board, board meeting. And that was the letter submitted to us by the Board Chair, Ms. Bordalia.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hafaday, Joey, thank you for coming forward. And Mr. Herrera, I really appreciate it. And yes, you know, a lot of the mistakes that were made in the past, I want to thank you for making that extra effort to do the investigation on what happened on the Raceway Park, you and your drone, which was very, very helpful. So I mean, that's a very good equipment to be used, especially the amount of land that you have to cover. So Joey, does Chamor Land Trust, just a real quick one, do they plan on having a drone for your office? I mean, that would help with the massive amount of land that you have to oversee, you guys. If not, you should put that in your budget bill.
We'll take note of that, and we'll provide it to the board when they discuss on June 17.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think a drone will be very helpful. It did help us when we were trying to look at what was happening over at the Guam Raceway Park. And that brings me to the next question, are, with this legislation in place and the intention, do you have enough staff, or would you hire somebody to monitor and this whole process?
To answer your question, Senator Taidewi, I can prematurely identify what the Commission will do. However, the concerns that we do gather today will be presented to the board at the July 17 meeting for their decision and how to address or how to recommend any changes.
Well, not just changes, but also the cost that it's gonna take in order to see this bill through. There will be a cost, and that's important, and the manpower that's gonna need it, hence drone. Okay.
Senator, may I?
Oh, sure, sure. Go ahead, Dan.
The bidders, the construction industry, would expect to be required to pay for someone to monitor it, to pay for a Chamor Land Trust staff member to monitor it. That's what we would expect, that there would be a full-time Chamor Land Trust employee there or employees there, and it would come out of our bidding, it would come out of the bidders, the bidders' proffer for the cost, yes.
Okay, so those intended to have a bid for this project, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, so it'll follow, so I don't know if we can, you know, procurement, Queen is sitting next to me, so there might be some issues if we talk about things like that on bids right now. But moving, moving forward, you know, the legislation promises new homestead lots, but it doesn't guarantee how many, you know, lots will be created, and when will they be available, or how will they be prioritized? That's a question. Joey, you know, this hearing is taped, so you'll be able to take that to the board to ask that question, if you're not writing it down. Also, we're, by the way, we're...
I'm ready, I'm ready to answer that question.
Okay, well, technically, it's, if you're bidding on something, are you telling the Chamor Land Trust how it should work, or what it should work?
I'm just relating.
Maybe you can just submit...
There are practical, there are practical circumstances that exist when we mass grade.
Well, Dan, really, you know, for all good intentions, I just want to make sure you're safe, because if you're a company or you're affiliated with anybody that's gonna bid, I recommend that, you know, you just take, not say too much, because I'm worried that, you know, there'd be a procurement issue regarding this. So just be safe, and...
I'm not worried.
You know, you're divulging information that hasn't even been put in a bid. It almost looks like it's coerced.
Actually, it's in the bill itself, that 40 to 80 homestead lots. And since this bill, since this bill dictates the option of a flat, of a level area to be graded, that would be closer to the 80 lots that could be created. It's just mathematical from the square meters of the property itself.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm just curious, then, you know, when, you know, when will it be available?
Well, that, again, is one of the practical realities of this. Because the land is sloping, we have to take the upper part first, right? But in fact, we're not gonna develop till we get down to the base elevation, so there's gonna be several years of excavation before we get to the final site level when development can begin. That, as well as, there's a practical limitation to how much can be excavated a year, probably a half a million cubic yards a year, and if we're expecting somewhere around 3 million cubic yards to come out of this whole property, the 60 acres, excuse me, which is the subject of this bill, there's about six years of work there. Yeah, and so we can't start making those developable lots ready until we get everything down and out of the way. So unfortunately, we can't. Now, if we did the other option where we would start benching, right? Well, then we could do a bench, ready. Second bench, ready. Third bench, ready. But in this case, it's gonna take a few years to get down to the final landform site.
Also, Joey, if you can also bring back to the Chamor Land Trust, the prioritizing of these lots, you know, who will get them first, or what is the situation with that? Okay. Also, where's this located, is 541, this is 5412 lot, where's that located? Is that like before Hawaiian Rock, or?
If you're facing GPA, it's to the left.
To the left, okay. And what about the surrounding areas, the safety of the surrounding areas? Because when you're looking at digging any, anything up, especially coral, there's a lot of, you know, dust. There's a lot of environmental issues that I'm concerned with, and you've, you've got families that live nearby. The damages, not just on, you know, material, or the homes, or the cars getting a lot of dust on, I'm talking about the health, the breathing in of this stuff. So is Chamor Land Trust going to provide, you know, some mitigations or areas in which EPA can assist you? That's something you can bring back to, Joey. I know it's hard, you know, to answer these questions without the board right now, but please bring these questions back to the board, because it's one of my biggest concerns. The bill doesn't mention a buffer zone, you know, buffer zone, so what is the plan to reduce the impact of extractions on nearby residents, especially, again, with the noise too, not just the dust and everything, so, and the traffic? So these are areas that I'm concerned with, and like our public auditor said, plan, 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 plan. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Taidewi. Senator Turlawie, you're recognized, ma'am. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak on the bill. Joey, are there, can I ask, are there other, are there any Chamor Land Trust lessees who occupy lots in that, in that area? How many?
I believe there are lessees within Lot 5412.
Okay.
The indefinite number we can provide are literally...
Yeah, please, just be worried that we're gonna be quarrying and mineral extracting these people out of where they... and mineral extracting these people out of where they live, not to mention the constant noise pollution that's going to be happening next to these. So you're confirming on the record that people actually live in this lot that we're trying to put out for bid for mineral extraction?
Within the basic lot, yes.
Are you able to provide any information? There's a popular hiking trail right to the left of GPA that goes down to Fadien, all the way down to the water. Where is this lot relative to that popular hiking spot?
Specifically, I can't identify that at this time, but we'll be more than happy to provide a map.
I believe it's the same lot.
Within the basic, probably.
Right, so I'm just worried that, you know, moving forward with this, that we're going to jeopardize not just the area where we have families. You know, it's interesting that we talk about we want to generate revenue to put families onto these lots, yet there are already families on these lots that we're looking to turn into a quarry. Any comment on that?
Not at this time, Senator.
Okay. So and also, I hope we allow the Chamor Land Trust Commission to provide testimony because if the meeting isn't until July 17 and that is longer than the 10 days I believe that the legislature usually allows for, and I definitely want to hear their input.
Definitely immediately after the board meeting and a decision has been made, testimony will be provided. Our Oversight Chair, Vice Speaker Addus Office has been very acceptable to accepting our late testimonies.
Thank you. I'll ask you because we're very close, we're getting closer to our next session. And so I would hate to see this bill put on the agenda without us being able to kind of take in the commentary from the commissioners and the Chamor Land Trust Commission to get their perspective on it. I guess other than that, my only comments are really, I guess, Mr. Suaveley, so you were a consultant and who, which companies against it did you say you represent?
My own, my own. Oh, companies that I represent?
That you consult for?
Oh, dozens right now, dozens right now. But in the actual construction field, the biggest ones are Smith Bridge and Hawaiian Rock.
Is it reasonable?
I'm not representing them, I consult with them.
Okay, but is it reasonable to assume that these two companies would probably be among the ones or maybe the ones to bid on this?
Absolutely, absolutely. Every contractor needs a more aggregate right now. And we can go and buy it from private landowners, you know, we can do mass grading on those properties and pay them, or we could do it here and pay the Chamor Land Trust. That's really the economics of it.
What's the, we're talking about economics. What's the going rate for?
Yeah, I expected that question, of course. The, there's an example in the bill of $2 a cubic yard.
Is that, is that like a?
That's a little old, it's a little old, yeah. Of course, it depends upon all the things a contractor has to do, right? Now, in this case, a contractor is going to have to do all the topographic survey first. We're going to have to do the environmental assessments and mitigation, if necessary, archaeological and mitigation, if necessary, go through all the grading and clearing permit requirements. You know, that'll be on our back, on their back. And then so that all comes out of it. I, the weigh station and the personnel. I suspect we'd be somewhere in the range of about $4, maybe a cubic yard now? Maybe double what's in here, maybe not quite, but in that range. Again, again, we can get aggregate from private landowners. So we have to balance what it's going to cost us there with what it would cost us here, yeah? But this is just a much better use for the money. This is just a much better use for Guam.
How profitable is this mineral extraction?
Well, it's, it in itself is not an economic point. Aggregate is a component of concrete.
Sure, sure, sure.
You know, this island is built of concrete.
But you mentioned that there's going to be a lot of upfront costs that the potential winners of the bid would have to fork out to, you know, to do what the bill says. But, you know, I'm just asking, even with all that, it must still be profitable or we wouldn't be sitting here today.
It's not that the aggregate itself could be a loss leader, but you can't make concrete without aggregate. So no matter what, we need the aggregate. And of course, the other components of concrete, some are local, some we have to import, like the cement itself, many of the additives. Sometimes we put resins in and even sometimes a particular additive of aggregate we have to bring in to make the specifications for certain projects. So I don't have a number for that, but I think Dave here mentioned that concrete is now over $200 a cubic yard delivered, right? I think we can all remember when it was 60, 70, yeah? And if you follow the cost components there, you can see that the imported cost of cement itself has grown the most. Labor has grown a lot, right? Transportation, regulations, regulatory authorities. Aggregate itself has been more or less stable all these years, the cost of aggregate. So that's why in and itself is, can only be measured as a.
As a consultant for companies that could potentially benefit from the passage of this bill, were you involved in the bill's crafting? Or did you have any involvement in its introduction? At any iteration of the bill?
I drafted the initial bill six years ago and gave it to Senator Sinodeston.
Have you thought to register as a lobbyist with the legislature?
I'm not lobbying, I'm giving a testimony, giving a testimony, a public testimony about how this is good for Guam, good for Guam, just like Mr. Herrera said before me. And he's not a lobbyist either.
Mr. Herrera, buenos, good afternoon. You know, we're asking about this because you were the individual who, in your previous role as the Chamor Land Trust Commissioner, unearthed kind of the scandal that was ongoing up at the racetrack. And although the property at the racetrack wasn't, the intent of that lease wasn't really primarily for the mineral extraction and the mining that went on up there, right? It was supposed, it was kind of a racetrack first and then whatever they extracted theoretically, the Chamor Land Trust was supposed to get a cut. And so you kind of blew the lid off that. You know, you took your drone up there and you showed the people of Guam, the peninsula, and all of this information that you were able to gather was so integral really into this, the previous bodies and the media looking into what was going on up at the racetrack. And I think, I want to say, even one of these companies that was mentioned today had, did a back road. And so they were going, you know, kind of back door. They were taking the cascal out the back lot and showing up wherever on down the road. So I think it's very clear that the Chamor Land Trust is going to have problems monitoring this. And I, you know, for me, the honor system didn't really seem to work out the last time we entered into an arrangement with this. So I just have to ask, I know you said you support the Bill Sinot, but how do you suggest that we ensure that the Chamor Land Trust lessees aren't taken for a ride again?
What I did earlier is that, remember, I did, was that do a drone? So I submitted the, some of the clips earlier, but it was not able to show. So I wanted it to show the public, you know, what we captured, or at least what I captured during the assessment of Lot 7161, the 252 acres. So from that, no, that operation, right, basically was, it was supposed to be a 50-50 contract and that was a 50-year lease. So the problem with that is that who was monitoring the extraction? And it was supposed to be GIDA, but GIDA never did the assessment. But then we can, like Mr. Suaveley said, we can do an initial topography measurement, do the computation of the before, during, and after, and we can have a general idea of how much was extracted. But again, that's 252 acres. So if you've been to the racetrack, you can see, and that's what I wanted to show visually, is that you have a cliff line of about maybe 50, 60 feet on the east, north, and the west side of the drag strip. That's just one issue. Then the other issues that, you know, they did, Smith Bridge did a back road access from Smith Bridge into Land Trust into Lot 7161. And it's public record that, you know, Smith Bridge did attest that, no, he or Smith Bridge was paying the current.
Yeah, it was like a subcontract, correct?
Yeah.
And isn't that in violation of the?
A handshake. But you see, lesson learned from that. If we're going to do an operation on Fadien, then of course, like Mr. Suaveley was saying, of course, we have to do a weigh station. But there's different kind of weigh stations. You have an automated that you can have it automatically where the machine can pass through. You have photo cameras and weigh scale. Or hybrid where, like he mentioned. I don't know, I don't really know, Mr. Suaveley.
Oh, because you guys are sitting next to each other? I thought that was your buddy?
I check his work and he may check my work, so.
Right on, right on.
But my whole advocacy here is for the benefit of the constituent, the beneficiaries from, that's from the beginning to the end. And of course, if we can utilize, remember, we have one-third of the island and the demand for this material is very high and the supply is not much. Maybe less than a third of the island has this kind of material. What's the profit margin on this one? It's like a loss leader. You know, it's a material that you mix in with other aggregate. And the cost to extract the material, I know that we were here discussing about heavy equipment for one operation that was 61 units. Now, to extract those kind of material, maybe a backhoe and excavator won't do it. You may need to detonate it, to crack it, to extract. And all those require a lot of overhead. Or you can use a jackhammer to do it, but. So anyway, that's the long story short.
Right, right. No, I agree, but I just think, you know, let's be realistic. We wouldn't see this effort in trying to get this bill through if, you know, powerful people weren't going to make money off it. And, you know, they are, and hopefully we'll get a subdivision. I mean, hopefully.
Right, that's the whole objective here is to taper it, like a sloping topography tapered where it's going to be pad-ready. Now, I haven't seen the engineering breakdown on the horizontal or the vertical computation, but we can do that, we can. But we've assessed the Fadien, I think, two years ago. But was that, we never went through to make it a law, but here it is again. So I think it's a win-win for the island and the Land Trust. However, I think Mr. Komachi was saying that he wanted to implement a lifeline. What does that mean?
I don't want to speak for Mr. Komachi, but I think he's saying that the scheme would be that Hawaiian Rock or Smith Bridge or whoever would excavate the minerals and then they're going to sell them at a discounted rate to the Chamor Land Trust lessees. That's what I got out of it.
Yeah, yeah, in general, well, the high demand now, most of the companies that are going to be extracting that would be providing the support on the base, on the naval base. But we need, whoever's going to draft this bill, we have to implement and insert a clause that, you know, you cannot put the Chamor Land Trust customers on the side. You know, there should be an equilibrium also that when we start, when the constituent starts building, that they also be provided with aggregate and material.
Right, I guess, Mr. Joey, if you could also take this back to the board relative to the rate that's listed in the bill, current market rate for quality limestone is approximately $2 per cubic yard. Just to verify the, I don't even think that's accurate anymore. So, you know, so if the intent of endeavors like this is to generate the revenue for the lessees or the commission, what I found and just kind of paying attention to a lot of these things is we end up with an idea that might be good, but, you know, because we parry-parry it and, you know, do something like a lifeline rate or we allow the cascal to be silver $2 or, you know, very reduced from what it's actually worth, then we don't make out at all. You know what I mean? And it is frustrating to hear that, you know, we need these millions of dollars to survey, to get infrastructure out to these lots. But then when we as lawmakers do things like appropriate $9 million, right? To do exactly that, and then we have other colleagues who try to take that money and move it to other agencies. So I'm glad that that never came to fruition. But while we're on the subject, and I hope the Chair would indulge me, do you have any status update on the $9 million?
The $9 million appropriation?
Yeah.
The board has been presented with a list of parcels and tracts, and they have approved the parcels and tracts and the services that CLTC will be obtaining from the Department of Land Management, Guam Power, and the Guam Water Works.
Right, and so what's that looking like? The return on investment, if you will?
Well, definitely in terms of benefit for our constituency, it's about 743 applicants and lessees in total. So definitely, it will provide them the opportunity to avail the infrastructure that will be available and the easements that will be created for them to get to their leased properties.
That's great news, and that's why I supported, that's why I voted for that, so we can give the Chamor Land Trust Commission and the lessees the breathing room that they need and the funds that they need to get out to these properties without having to engage in anything that, you know, looks or smells like special interest or looks or smells like it's not really going to benefit the Chamor Land Trust Commission. So thank you for the time, Mr. Chair Sido Swaseo.
Thank you, Senator Barnett, you're welcome. Senator Chalahi, you're ready now?
Yes, Sido Swaseo, thank you. I wanted to look something up, so I did find it. So first of all, Mr. Herrera, did you say you have testimony that you wanted to present video?
Yes, it was those video clips that I took back when I was a commissioner and I coordinated with the office. But we tried to download it here. I think we tried airdrop and then we were going to test it in the AV room. But they were telling me that they were, I don't think we can bifurcate it with Zoom. I'm not sure how the system is set up here, but if you have the Zoom and we were going to play the video, unless we have a split screen.
All right, is Mr. Chair, is Mr. Komachi still on the Zoom?
Mr. Komachi, are you still online?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, he's still here, so.
All right.
Thank you.
What would the clips have shown, Mr. Herrera?
One more time?
What would they have shown? Did they show this property that we're talking about?
Oh, no, it showed the property at 7161, the 250.
The Raceway.
Yeah, but I did have another, what's that? Mapping on Fadien when we were introducing it back two years ago. But I don't have that now. It's in the Land Trust.
When you say when we were introducing it two years ago, what do you mean by that? Because the Land Trust, to my knowledge, never introduced this.
Yeah, no, the bill was in the committee somewhere two years ago. So of course, because I'm there, I wanted to analyze what are the potential income-producing properties that we can. And that was, when I first got on board in March, and Joey can attest, I asked him straight, okay, we've been in operation for the last 30 years. Question number one was that, how many homes have we built? You recall? And we have not built any home. Second question is that, what is our cash flow for the year? And it was about $500,000, right? And then what is our expense for the year? It's about 1.5 mil. You know, basic math, right? You're underwater already, so. The thought there at that time is how do we create and create a cash flow for the Chamor Land Trust utilizing the? create a cash flow for the Chamor Land Trust, utilizing the one-third of properties that are in the inventory to create some sort of a revenue? So this is one of them.
This is a very finite source of revenue, though. It will be, it's like NARU.
No, but we can develop the property and put about 80 ready pad lots. That's the positive side here.
I understand the proposal. I understand, too, that this has been an unsolicited proposal before the Land Trust for many years. And in fact, they had attempted in the past. It's even in the president of Hawaiian Rock Products testimony, Mr. Jared Johnson, that they were ready to go forward until a law was passed that said all commercial leases have to be competitive and solicited. So let me just start off on page two of the bill. It says that the land is presently inaccessible and undevelopable. Has there been any finding of that? Because didn't someone testify that GPA and GWA built right next to this property? Isn't that correct? GPA and GWA's building is right adjacent to this property? Is that correct, Mr. Cruz? That's correct? And, you know, Mr. Chair, before I go any further, I don't want to forget, but I really want to object that we are proceeding without the Chamor Land Trust's input, even though the administrator's here, because if we go forward and we just only allow them to submit written testimony, we are unable to question them or to get a discussion back and forth and get our questions answered. I wish they could be here so that they could testify in person.
Senator Chalahi, so do I. I wish they were here, because this bill has been introduced since January.
Yeah, but they will discuss it July 17. They have been bombarded with bills, and I think in their last meeting, they had a whole slew of them, and this is, there's just so many.
Yeah, obviously, this has been introduced since January.
Yes, but it is their property, and they said July 17.
I understand, but I immediately did their confirmation hearings to get their folks on board, so, you know.
And they've had one meeting since that confirmation.
So as to what their priorities are?
They did do a list of bills. Their priority was to take care of their beneficiaries, I'm sure.
Well, they heard these bills prior, then we would know where they're at.
Second meeting, they did a whole slew of bills that had been presented by the legislature. They said on July 17, they would get to this one. That's their next monthly meeting. I also think that we're talking about mining here. We should have Weary, this is again Aquifer, part of Guam, EPA, the Department of Agriculture, because there is a forest on this property. There, we should have BSP, because they did tell us before that they have in their land use plans designated this, I believe, or part of it at least, conservation area. DPW as well regarding what is their capacity for mining. And there's not even a map for us here to discuss, to really give to the senators who have to make this decision, the actual view of what's adjacent to this property and to verify what's being said here. So I just want to put that on the record, Mr. Chair, that those things I think we should have for this hearing. And I would hope that you can reschedule another hearing as well. But back to the inaccessible and undevelopable land, they said right next to this land is GWA, GPA. They also said that there are existing leases. I think there are four, at least, existing leases on this property. I read some report that said this used to be ranches and people living in the area. I would like to know what we're really talking about when they say that the potential might be $2 per cubic yard, a million dollars per year. I'd like to get that updated and talk about it again in another hearing. They say they can build homestead lots. I think, sorry. Mr. Swaveley testified 40 to 60, but that is, I don't see that in the bill. Is that correct? 40 to 80?
40 to 80.
That's, whose estimate is that?
We did.
Who's "we"?
I did.
You did?
I did, yes. On a typical subdivision plot for homes, community amenities, maybe a police coban, things like that, streets and this and that. The 40 was for if we benched it. The 80 is if it was all made flat.
If you bring down the whole thing. And how deep are you anticipating to mine this area?
Well, mining is not the correct word. We're masquerading it, because we're making a reusable land form. Out of a mine, you don't get a reusable land form. You only get a mine. So probably 120 feet.
It's mineral extraction, correct? According to our law?
120 feet or so, we would come down to.
How many feet?
About 120 feet or so. It depends again. Okay, so we're, here's Route 15. Here is the GPA and GWA. The leases, and I counted five, are also at the top. As that drops down, there is a huge quarry which was mined 60, 70 years ago. It's called the BPAM Quarry. It was used to create the coral to build Route 15. So you have Route 15, the two institutions, a few lots on the top, and then here is this big hole, and then further down is about 60 acres that has not yet been, that has not been graded. That's the 60 acres.
Quarry.
That's the 60 acres.
60 acres that you want? So you're not?
That's the subject of this bill, 60 acres, yeah.
Okay. Well, it just says the lot. The, I don't think it's even limited to 60 acres in this bill. Is it? Where is that?
Well, it was in the bill. I saw it. Anyway, there is a limitation to the, with the property lines, and the $2 a square meter is a little bit misrepresented to say this is what you're expecting. No. What you're expecting is the highest bid. We are, you will be bidding out this resource to the highest bidder.
Yeah. How many bidders do you expect there to be besides Hawaiian Rock and Smithbridge?
Probably four or five.
More others? Outside of Hawaiian Rock and Smithbridge?
There are about four or five concrete manufacturers on Guam. Yeah. There's three big ones, and there's a few smaller ones.
Who are they?
The biggest ones are Hawaiian Rock. That's not only concrete, but asphalt as well. Also requires aggregate. Smithbridge and Cortec.
All right. And the bill, someone said the bill would authorize the CLTC to do this, but actually, the bill mandates the CLTC to do this. It gives them no choice in the matter. It says you're going to accept the best bid. And that's why I wanted to know how many companies there were, because I was worried if there are only a couple companies. I know that these companies must work with each other, and I just want to make sure that they can get value. Well.
They don't, they don't work with each other, Senator. They work, they're in competition with each other.
Mr. Herrera, when they excavated around the raceway, how deep was the deepest part that they had extracted?
From the top of the drag strip, about 60 feet.
60 feet?
Yes.
And we saw the photos of that. This one, they're proposing 160 feet, did he say?
Yeah. We're using Route 15 as a.
Double that. They want to do on this property.
You know, actually, if we really wanted to get down to sea level.
Do you want to get this property down to sea level?
No, of course, no, but what I'm saying is that if that was the intent, right?
Whose intent is that?
No, no, it's not the intent. Our intent is to build on the property.
Yeah, but they intended to bring it down to 120 feet. And the, and the raceway was brought down 60 feet, and that was shocking to all of us.
Senator, I'm sorry. It's just, it's not like that. We're starting at different elevations, okay? The 120 feet was from the very top to about the bottom. Now, the 60, as I mentioned, the 60 acres is well down, well down the property already. It'll be surveyed, we'll have a topographic survey of it, we'll know where we start, where we end. All the grading plan will have to go through, all the agencies you mentioned, before we can begin, before anything can begin here. Yeah? And like we said, there were a couple of options in the first bill, which your committee handled two years ago. The only thing changes between that bill and this is the amendments here. All the rest were in your committee.
That's correct.
So what we changed is, what I see here is, we've eliminated the bench, we've gone straight down to the 80, which, okay, that's more bang for the buck. You know, I get that. But again, that brings in other practical difficulties about how we get down there before we can start developing the properties.
All right. So, Mr. Swaveley, you said you wrote this bill on page three. It proposes to delete subsection two of 75122, which currently mandates that every award of the CLTC be through competitive bid. And then it puts in a new subsection that only talks about lot 5412. Why are we removing the competitive bid requirements for CLTC's other lots?
What? I don't, I don't, I don't follow that.
Well, what is subsection two being deleted do? It removes the mandate that it be competitively bid, right? The leases at the CLTC. Mr. Cruz, would you like to talk about this part? Would this remove your requirement to do competitive bids for all your other leases? Or not?
It may potentially, but we would need to refer to our attorney to determine.
Okay. Too bad he just walked out a little while ago. All right. Well, that's my concern. It's like in place of requirements that were put in place for all of your leases, they're putting in a requirement just for this lot, removing the competitive bid requirements for all the other leases. But I, too, have to look at the statute. I haven't. It's not here right now. The provisions that they are requiring here, they say they shall do it if it falls within your 9%. Are you able to testify as to that today?
Just generally speaking, Senator Chalahi, the board, I believe, will discuss this in detail, and any recommendations insofar as amendments to the bill, we'll definitely provide it. Given the last few bills, they have heard there were some amendments that were requested, but definitely to speak on the bill in its form today on behalf of the commission, I can't do that.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you. The, so again, in this page, it says that the CLTC shall immediately approve that, and I just don't like that they have no discretion in this matter. The, it says it will be competitive, that's correct. I wanted to ask, on page four, it says that there will be a single fixed price per cubic yard of aggregate removed, but there shall be no revenue to CLTC from the removal of other materials that are unsuitable as aggregate. What happens to that material? For example, the topsoil?
Whenever.
Wait, do you know, Mr. Cruz, at this point?
No, I don't, but definitely I'm taking note so that it's brought up.
Mr. Herrera, do you know what would happen to the rest of the material?
No, not according to this bill, but I do have an idea.
Mr. Swaveley?
Yeah, thank you. We call this, what do we call it? Overgrowth? You know, these are the trees, the bushes, the grass, and the first maybe six to 12 inches of soil on the top, which is not aggregate, which is not what a contractor would be bidding for. That will have to be removed first. We've done this at other places. We have specific guidelines from EPA. The biological wastes, we can take to one of the biological places that either burns it or compost it or other things, and they separate it from, they separate it from the soil. There is a cost, of course, involved with both transporting it and delivering it to those sites, but all of those are covered by a separate permit from EPA, a fill permit, and that's how that will be handled.
All right. Well, I just wanted to point that out to both of you. Yeah, this is, all other material will be owned by the contractor. If I could talk to Mr. Camacho on Zoom, if he is still here with us?
Yes, Senator, I'm still here.
Yeah, thank you. Can you just clarify, is your proposal so that the aggregate that's removed from this property will actually be used for CLTC construction, such as roads and houses?
Now, as you heard Mr. Swaveley describe, that the limestone is just the limestone part, but when it goes to the manufacturing processing site, when it gets converted to crush aggregate, sand, concrete, and the mix to mix with concrete to create the hollow blocks, those are the one I stated in my test, well, in my written testimony, that I'm hoping to look for a lifeline rate for the end user. And the end user will be at the three categories that I am suggesting are the Chamor Land Trust recipients, those who are building, because they would get a lifeline rate at a lower cost, hopefully, if it gets adopted, when they build their homes. I don't benefit in that. I may benefit as a third option, as I said, as a developer, developing affordable housing, because at the end of the day, my families, I'm targeting with all my federal funding program, are targeted to the low-income families, and it's always very hard for us to make our numbers look, to meet the numbers in our debt coverage ratio because of the high costs. This is one way, I was saying, that there will be three benefactors. One is a Chamor Land Trust recipient, for sure, because they're the guys, and they're the families who are gonna build. The second are the private landowners who are gonna build their own home and build on your land program. They need the help, too, because they also have only limited buying power, and they can, whatever way we can lower the cost for them. And any developer who's developing affordable housing that can also lower the cost to target their targeted group. Now, don't forget, in my testimony, I mentioned there are compliance safeguards. These compliance safeguards are, one, you can, any, if you have a Chamor Land Trust lease, you automatically would qualify for the lifeline rate, because you are a recipient. If you are a private landowner that wants to do it, that way you don't circumvent the stuff to do it and get the best price, then flip it. You gotta put co a land use restriction affordability period, which we do in HUD, and we secure that through a deed restriction. And then those families also will get a certified letter, and my letter, if you see it, from Guam Housing Agora, that they met the income limits. That's who they're serving. That's the, that is the compliance document they're gonna need to show Hawaiian Rock that they qualify for the lifeline rate, if you guys agree to that concept. Just like us in the development side, when we develop affordable housing, we will put the land use restriction that is strictly for the affordable housing, target it to the 50%, to the 150% as HUD publishes on their, on their annual income, area median income category. Those are the restriction, deed restriction that will be recorded at land management. That way, it will not be given to any other type of development to take advantage or to utilize the lifeline rate for its targeted use. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, but that's a lifeline rate. But what percentage of the aggregate that's being removed will be sold back as a different type of product to the CLTC beneficiaries? It doesn't say.
No, as I stated, that limestone material will go to the batching plant operation, whoever that is. whoever that is, Smith Bridge, Hawaiian Rock, Cortec, or the other two smaller operators, because they're going to need the aggregate to create concrete. When they create the concrete, there'll be so much per cubic yard sold in market. And you guys all know the inflationary cost, the demand for cost of concrete in the commercial properties, like the military and all that, has a high demand. Unfortunately, our families in the low-income, moderate-income category, we get, they get stuck in that pricing mechanism. So, and they get, they get that, and they cannot afford, or they have to reduce their home. They can't live in a nice, comfortable home because they can't, they can't get the pricing. I only brought up that idea only if you guys wanted to adopt it. And I think I saw, you know, there's, how this, this idea is not new. If you look at FCC, they got the lifeline rate for internet for the low-income families, which I've used with GTA and Docomo and those guys, for my families to get subsidized internet. And that is what works for my families to have access to technology. You've seen the first five hundred kilowatt-hours a GPA provide called, I think they call it a lifeline rate, at a lower rate for certain income families. So everybody's using, and I think you guys, the Senate, adopted a lifeline rate for the water, waterworks, if I'm not mistaken. I think that was Senator Sabina Perez's policy, I think, I may be wrong. So it was ideas that's already created by policymakers like you guys. I'm just wanting to throw it in so that there's, if it's germane, then hopefully we can include it. If that's not going to hurt the operators or hurt Chamorland Trust, put it out to bid. That's why I said there was an opt-in and opt-out provision. And I'm not trying to force it to do it, but it's just an idea I'm just throwing in so that we can sustain affordability and that when we grow the potential housing market, that'll be an economic multiplier, as what you guys have been describing in many different angles, but...
Yeah, so it would be a cheaper rate for sand, coral, these products, right? Concrete, I guess, and we would, our beneficiaries would be able to get that cheaper rate, that lifeline rate, as you describe it, from the company who wins this bid?
Well, I don't know who it is, but I'm assuming if it's one of those guys that also sell the byproducts, the sand, the concrete, the base cores and the hollow blocks. That's why, if you notice, I said it, the lifeline rate transfers to the end use of the resale of their product. But I suggested a QC arm for any of these guys so that they can get more proactive in promoting it if they want to. But again, I'm only making that suggestion. It's not, it's not something that I'm saying it must be done. I'm just giving an idea on trying to resolve some affordable housing concerns to a certain targeted group of families.
I agree with, I agree with you that if the aggregate's going to be removed and used for affordable housing, especially housing on the Chamorland Trust properties, that's a great idea, but I don't think that's what exactly it says, right? It says that it's just going to, it could be used by anybody, anywhere, at this lifeline rate. And if the developer, or a developer, not this developer, but a developer, wants to build affordable housing, that QC is tied to that and a lifeline rate. But, Mr. Camacho, isn't there a way that the CLTC could potentially discuss and maybe make a plan and figure out a way to use this property for housing and not simply for aggregate? Or to do both and to have the houses built as part of the deal? Because otherwise, we're going to end up with, you know, excavated property, no houses.
Well, I, only I'm hearing on what Mr. Herrera and Mr. Swaveley's been disclosing. I am not a professional in the grading, or as you call it, what they were trying to describe, the different tier or the level. I hope that there are, you know, as you state, there may be some safeguards. And I thought I heard there will be first a point of the topo survey number one, the middle point, and the end point. Now, maybe there should be some milestone in each of the category that they got to report back, because based on the history that I saw and the, what Mr. Herrera described on the raceway, there was nobody there doing the monitoring. But I'm assuming if you had those safeguards and the ultimate goal is to get it pad-ready, of course, that'll be a great opportunity, because right now you can't do eighty lots or sixty lots as they describe. You probably can do only so many what you can do on that high-slope scenario. But again, I'm not, that's not my, I'm just saying if it is going to yield more, then that's to the benefit. If it's going to yield more and bring in the cash flows, that's why I supported to find financial resources to develop the other properties around the island that may need these financial resources, as you guys stated.
Well, I mentioned asking you, as a developer of housing and affordable housing, isn't it possible that CLTC can come up with a deal to actually develop affordable housing on this lot as opposed to just making the aggregate available for all other people and companies? And potentially, our beneficiaries cannot afford what they need to build their houses?
I, all I know is that the ultimate, there's only three concrete suppliers in Guam. They do need this resource, that's all I know. And this is just one way, I'm just bringing, at least they came back with all the safeguards, what I thought I saw in the bill. And basically, I just wanted to put a lifeline rate with some compliance protection and suggestion for the targeted use of the low-income families, especially for the Chamorland Trust recipients that are building elsewhere. As Mr. Herrera described, there's a project in Jigo that is already ready to go if Chamorland Trust decides to put that out in an RFP. So there's, if I'm not mistaken, that's a hundred and sixty-six house lots. Doesn't need the grading as what we're doing need, but that's already, just needs to be clear and graded on the green waste. And that's a hundred and sixty-six families going to build. If they're going to build at two-fifty a square feet, I hope they have the buying capacity to do it. But if this lifeline rate applies, and hopefully they get a ten or twenty percent discount on their construct, on their concrete use, I don't know what that number is, but if that helps a little bit, that's, they benefit, that's all I'm saying, I'm not...
And are you saying, you think that we can bind the winning bidder to that type of a proposal? To sell their products at a lifeline rate?
If, if you notice, I put my, I put my disclosure there that as long as I don't affect their operational, financial, sort of, I don't run their operation. And if they don't want to bid because there's a lifeline rate, I don't want to hurt the deal. That's why I said it's an opt-in, opt-out situation, and Chamorland Trust will make that final call with their Board of Commission.
Okay, well...
I'm just giving, I'm just giving an idea on how to...
Yeah, I appreciate that, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Terahy.
Thank you, can I just ask one more question?
One more question, okay.
So, I want to make sure that the CLTC, so they talked about us approving bonds, just as we're going to approve, I don't know, the other hearing. But when we do that, sometimes we put minimums. And I think this is going out for competitive bid, and I just think the way the market is today, CLTC should put minimums. They should put, if we're going out to do this mineral extraction that we have prohibited in all other properties of the CLTC, and we want money, and that's exactly what you want, is money, not housing, money, then you better get money, and you better put minimums. And I don't think you need to stick to this competitive bid. Put minimums in there, I mean competitive with minimums, so that we don't go below any of those expected amounts. And honestly, I think the Chamorland Trust has a lot of use for these products. And to, and that they haven't even begun to consider the need or the use of these products. For example, when you can't pave the roads because DPW tells you they don't have what they need, this is not going to help you. This is not going to help you when they can't build the houses because they can't afford the concrete. It will if you can structure it that way. But I don't know. We've cleared a lot of land on that side of the island. We have, we will have permitting review by these agencies, yes. But they're not here before us to talk to us, to tell us what their concerns are, to tell the CLTC what they should consider before they're mandated to do this. And I just, I just think there are bigger issues here that need to be considered as well. Not just, you know, one or two companies' need for a product and your need for money. You know, the nine million was supposed to be so that you don't have to be desperate and that you can make very, very good, wise decisions and get full value for our precious, precious resources that we have entrusted to the Chamorland Trust. So I know they're going to deliberate that on July seventeen, and I look forward to that. And I really do hope that they will be able to come back here to discuss that with us. This is Massey, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Terahy. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A quick question for Joey. I know in the CLTC law, it states that leases shall be assisted to ensure the use for their, the highest and best use. And, you know, in line with what Senator Terahy was asking. So do you think the highest and best use would be housing versus converting it to rubble?
That again, Senator Perez, I would have to leave that up to the board to decide what would be the highest and best use, either the product or the house, construction of a home.
Okay, and then in looking at the property, so has it been subdivided?
No, ma'am.
Okay, because in one of the maps that I'm looking at, there's, it seems to be there's some subdivisions that are occurring.
The map you're probably referring to could be a scheme. It's not an actual horizontal survey map that goes through the map review process. It's just a tabletop to identify where the current lessee is, their meat, not meets and bounds, but what the area, total area would be. But it's not, I don't think you're referring to a actual survey map.
Okay, because I'm looking at, there's a fifty-four, twelve, there's like eleven different, I guess, divisions of that particular property. So are there actually leases living on those lots?
I believe CLTC has issued about seven leases, if I'm not mistaken. I can't confirm at this time whether they're actually utilizing the property, but I believe somewhere around seven.
Okay. Also, according to my map, there are roughly about four sinkholes in that area. Are you aware of that?
No, ma'am, I'm not.
Yeah, and also it's in proximity to the aquaculture facility, Yoji's aquaculture facility, if you go down, down towards the coastline. So there is, I guess, other land users. Are they aware of this bill and what potential impacts it may have?
I'm not sure of the surrounding property owners or have been informed.
Okay, in the legislative intent, it talks about that it should not exceed the nine percent of total remaining unassigned CLT land inventory. What is that nine percent equal to in total land area?
Roughly about six hundred some acres, I believe, if I remember correctly.
Six hundred acres, we can't, basically, is only limited to commercial leasing, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, what is it at now, do you know the running total?
I can, we can provide that number at a later date.
Okay. The other thing is the landform, so it looks like, how is CLTC going to, I mean, if this bill is what CLTC wants, right? You know, how is that going to be determined in an RFP? What is the best landform to take?
That again, Senator, we will have to let the CLTC board decide that.
Okay, so, yeah, the issues, I mean, there was talk about green waste. To me, that's not waste. That is native ecosystems with native species in them. And to say that they're waste, green waste, I think it's, yeah, it's disheartening to hear that, at the least. Yeah, I mean, the thing that there's environmental impacts, for sure. We're talking about the sinkholes. Sinkholes are known to be the fast, I guess, charge for the aquifer. And so that is a concern when you have four, not just one, but four different sinkholes in that area that could impact the aquifer. And not also the native species and ecosystems in that area that support the native species, well, including the plants. The one thing that this bill doesn't mention is perhaps unexploded ordinances. So I know in my hikes in that, in the eastern part of the island, you know, one does come across grenades and such. So that's what this bill doesn't include, is that safety component in addition to other environmental concerns. So that's, that's a problem with, one of the problems I see in this bill. Another issue is in page three, actually page four, line twenty-four. It makes a reference that doesn't exist in the bill. It's an incorrect reference. On, it's actually B two, or Roman numeral two. So there, it refers to seventy-five, one-two-two C eight, two-one, and that doesn't exist from what I could tell in this copy of my bill, the bill that I have. Yeah, and I think, you know, in looking at CLTC properties, when we talk about landforms, I mean, unfortunately, I wish we could think, have a bigger view of how to best use CLTC properties rather than just a resource or a source of cascal, right? You know, to me, this is, you know, the land has been developed over millennia to support a lot of life forms. And maybe looking at embracing that, you know, as we see in other countries, they include the rock, instead of blowing up a rock, they include the rock in the design of a building, right? You know, incorporate and embrace environmental aspects of development, not destroy it. Especially because that's part of, I believe, our cultural heritage, as well as our natural heritage. The other question I have, so yeah, I think it's going to be very difficult to identify a final landform, unless you're specifically thinking about how much grading material you're going to produce. But to me, it's like, if you're looking at the quality of the land versus the quantity, I mean, if you're looking at quantity, you know, shaving it down to the coast, or if you're looking at quality, what are you going to do to preserve as much as you can, right? So those are some of the issues that I see with this bill. The other one in section three of the bill. So to me, I don't think I see enough, I guess, safeguards. So for instance, it says, "CLTC shall cancel the license for mass grading and mineral extraction when the approved landform is attained or in the event the warranty does not perform." So I think there's a large gap in between those two and what protections the CLTC have, should they move forward with this bill, right? So I think there's a lot that needs to be identified or at least addressed, because there's so much issues that can happen with this. And just thinking about what happened with the Raceway Park, you know, that was sixty feet, which was, you know, horrendous. And this is a hundred and twenty feet. I can't imagine that, that's just, it's even more shocking to hear that. Yeah, so I think environmentally, it's a huge problem when we have to rely on, you know, using CLTC lands as a source of cascal. know, using CLTC lands as a source of caskow. But on top of that, the environmental concerns regarding native species and ecosystems, and not to mention the water, right? This is why we live here. The fact that we have an abundant source of water makes it livable. But if we start to undermine that, undermine the source of our sustainability here on the island, I think that's, that's critical. So I think those are some of the comments. Again, yeah, what is the best and highest use, really? And that's in the law. Are we going to, you know, convert it to rubble? Or, you know, there's other things, I think, that we can think of. Is there anything else? Okay, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Gumatalto, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the panel for being with us today. And just to want to say for the record, when BBMR provided their fiscal note, they wrote that the extraction operations at this undeveloped portion of Lot 54-12 in the Yalau may potentially yield up to $1 million per year for the CLTC over the next six years, which, again, as we, we had the board in here, Mr. Chair, during their confirmation hearing, the, just waiting to do leases, this is, this could be potentially a big boost to help leases. Joey, thank you and welcome. As just before I go to my other part, my testimony, how many leases have, has the CLTC given out over the last four years?
Four years, I, I believe only two or three.
Okay, how many were given over the last 10 years, you think?
Not that much greater.
That's, that's what I was, I mean, I appreciate you being here to offer that insight, especially as we're trying to find ways to make this work. And I think, I just wanted to thank you again for your, for you being here. I also wanted to make a big note, Mr. Chair, because I heard it a bit earlier from one of my colleagues. This bill mirrors similar proposals, Mr. Chair, that were offered by the sponsor during the 36th and the 37th Guam Legislature. For the record, again, Bill 279-36 was introduced by Senator San Augustin on March 17, 2022. A public hearing was not conducted and a committee report was not filed for Bill 279-36COR. Then Bill 16-37COR was introduced on January 26, 2023, and a public hearing was conducted by its sponsor on October 2, 2023. Senator San Augustin, he conducted a public hearing as the prime sponsor after the lands committee failed to hold a public hearing on the bill within 120 calendar days of the bill's referral. So, Mr. Chair, to our, to our senator, maybe third time might be the charm here for this one. The Office of Public Accountability issued Report Number 23-08 in September of 2023, which analyzed the CLTC's oversight of the removal of coral material from the Guam International Raceway Park, and this is obviously from the Guam Raceway Federation, for the period of June 1, 1998 through January 31, 2023. Now, in that report, the OPA found that the total volume of materials extracted and how much total revenue was that was due to the CLTC in that report was undetermined. Now, the OPA made two recommendations to the management of the CLTC, specifically to establish, one, a standard operating procedure for invoicing and collecting royalty fees accompanied by supporting documents of the nature of the invoice, such as a statement of activity issued by the contracted company, and, two, policies with commissioners to ensure that all tenants meet their obligations before entering any new type of motion or, in this case, maybe of activities. Also, the OPA further recommended, Mr. Chair, for the Guam Legislature to clearly define and statute all terms associated with activities of earth excavation and to identify or establish jurisdiction of the development or exploitation, if you will, on natural resource, of natural resources on CLTC property or to include CLTC in statutory requirements that are regulated by the Guam Natural Resources Board. Now, recognizing that this proposal was first put forward in the year 2022 through Bill 279-36COR, which referenced a requirement by Guam's construction industry of approximately 1.5 million cubic yards of limestone aggregate per year with a market rate for quality limestone priced at approximately $2 per cubic yard. I think it was mentioned a bit earlier, but can anyone on the panel, just again, for me, I, again, I just might have missed it, what information is available as of June, or let's say July 2025, regarding any changes in the demand and cost of limestone aggregate since Ju, or since 2022? Maybe, yeah, thanks, thanks, Dan.
Yeah, thanks, Senator. The demand has gone up. I remember those, I, I calculated this from data, the, we needed about 1.5 to 2 million cubic, cubic yards per year. That is now at least 2 million cubic yards per year this year, next year, the next couple that, that we can see. So that's gone up. As I mentioned also, the cost itself of aggregate has not varied so much because we've been taking it either from the three existing quarries at, at, that Cortec has, that Smith Bridge has, that Hawaiian Rock has, plus we have been leasing some private properties where we have been masquerading for future subdivisions and other commercial development. So the cost per se hasn't gone up that much, but the time will come when we will run out. There's no doubt about that, unless we get additional sources.
Okay, so the price might have went up incrementally, but demand higher? The demand is higher?
The demand is definitely higher, yes.
Thank you.
The demand is higher because the, the, the construction profile of this island is increasing every year, yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much. With respect to the specific recommendations that were outlined in that report, OPA Report Number 23-08, to what extent has the CLTC established a standard operating procedure for invoicing and collecting royalty fees and policies to ensure that tenants meet their obligations before entertaining any new ones? Maybe I'll ask this to Joey again.
Currently, all our SOPs are in draft form, but when the OPA did issue his report, we, we started working on an SOP in relation to what would, what would CLTC require of any vendor and how would invoicing, invoices be processed, at what time, when is collection due, and, and all that other great stuff.
Yeah, Joey, and this is not an oversight hearing, but when you say that you have it in draft form, so have you been waiting for quorum to get this thing pushed through?
No, CLTC is overwhelmed with a lot of issues. We have a staff of nine that, that address all the issues that are current from the past and so forth. So we're, we're chipping at it ways slowly, but we're working on it.
Okay, so we, we talked about high demand, the revenue potential. Is there a possibility that this type of, well, the SOPs, could they be pushed forward to help support the operations of the CLTC?
That would be all contingent on the board's decision. We will, we'll present, but in the end, the board will decide to approve or to amend, whether it's up or down.
I'm hoping that as you are, I know we're looking at the July 17 to bring this policy forward, I'm hopeful that, again, this is my first time getting to engage with you, but I'm hoping that whatever your draft policies might be able to come and go coincide with the, with the action on this particular bill. Do you think that would be reasonable to ask?
Definitely, at every board meeting, whether it's for a bill or any proposals that are submitted, we, we, we prepare an internal report. Definitely, we shoot for the sky and let's see how it falls.
So if this can be placed a little bit higher in the sky, the policies, it can really, and you see that it could possibly be in tandem, could not only assist, I mean, it answers my first question about how many leases, don't, if we were elevate, if we maybe pushed it up further, could it be of, of significant help to the Land Trust?
Definitely. Any type of significant, whether it's revenue appropriations that are given to CLTC, it's significant.
Oh, no, and I'm not even talking about appropriations, I'm just talking about policy. I think that, I'm just trying to help, Joey. I think that if, if a policy is, if you can help nudge it, then as we are considering this particular policy, then it would make some reasonable sense that if it does go to fruition, man, this can really kickstart a lot of the actions on, I, I know you just got a quorum, so this is on top of the quorum issues, I think this would be super important, don't you think?
Definitely. And our, so far, our current board has been very supportive and been very mindful of, of the actions that we take or the planning purposes. But definitely, they do look out for the best interest of our beneficiaries and, and like I said, and not to speak to past commissioners, because they've also been very supportive of our, of our beneficiaries. But nonetheless, like I said, we, we present and we shoot for the stars and let's see where it falls.
Right, and I think you could perhaps maybe look at adding one person to help this program. I think this might make some sense from a staffing point of view. If we're looking at generating a certain amount of money, they could help to, you know, maybe one extra person, right, could help with this?
I, I believe from our experience with what happened at the Guam Raceway and, and the, our knowledge of, of implementing internal controls, I, I believe whether it's to recruit another person or to add more internal controls insofar as reporting, some engineering signatures or certification, it, it's possible. But again, nonetheless, in the end, it's the board to approve or deny.
Okay, I know I'm not the lands chair, but I, I think, absolutely think that this would be significant. If, you know, you know, we're here trying to help go from a couple, a handful of leases, in fairness, over the last decade, to, I think, the, when we talk about that nine million, there was like, I think it was mentioned of 40, 470 people, or leases, whatever the case might be. Anything more than one would be super huge for the Land Trust. I, I, I mean, I'm, maybe I'm not seeing it all, maybe I, maybe I'm just not, maybe I'm new? But I, I don't think so. I think that any, any way we can gain more resources and getting this type of activity can bring even more opportunity for the same constituents that have been waiting for decades to get a possible lease. Mr. Chair, thank you for the time and I appreciate the, the board and the panel being here today.
Thank you, Senator Gumatalto, and I'd like to thank the panel too for being here this afternoon. You know, and this is why we have these public hearings, is to put this out so that we can get the, the pros and cons into a piece of legislation. I mean, this perhaps could have been taken care of six years ago and we would be ending the, 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 the terracing of the property and perhaps we could have been already giving out additional property leases for those that want to build homes. This could have been also used to, use the, the funding from this to put infrastructure in that, that set division with the 166 lots that are ready to go. So, you know, it's not about who's, who's benefiting out of it, you know? Who's a sweetheart deal? It's not about it. What it's about is putting people onto property so that properties can build homes, so that families can call those homes theirs. Now, as to why all this has piled up until this time and day, I have no idea. I don't know what was done in the past, but I'm not repeating what was done in the past. I'm moving to what is being done today. Because we see what's going on out there. There are so many people that don't have homes. And like you said, Mr. Cruz, only two leases have been given out in the past four years. Past four years. What does that say about our government? What does that say about us wanting to put people into homes? This is one of those things that we just need to continue to move forward. Let's work together, let's stop working against each other. Let's not keep looking for what the bad things are, let's look for the good. There's good and bad in everything, but let's make the best of what we can, because people are suffering. It's not just going to be a big hole in the ground, it's going to be something that can be usable for people to enjoy. And I hope that with this, we'll be able to put more folks into, into leases and more leases so that they can purchase their homes and, and have their families have a secure place. Senator San Augustin, I'll go ahead and offer you your closing statement, sir. I already gave you your time, Senator, I'd like to thank you for that. Senator San Augustin, you're recognized.
I just objected to the insinuation that the Chamor Land Trust is doing nothing. They are trying to review hundreds or even thousands of leases, and they're trying to issue out hundred, six, over 600 leases to make sure those can go through as well.
I, I recognize you, and I respected your time.
I don't think they should prioritize getting aggregate over getting those leases out.
Senator, I did not insinuate the Chamor Land Trust is not doing anything. Not at all. Perhaps the committee chair in the past hasn't done anything.
Again, Mr. Chair, I don't know what that's about.
Definitely, not the Chamor Land Trust, because there's things going on.
Again, Mr. Chair, you haven't heard the testimony of any other agency, not even the Chamor Land Trust in here, and you're already making your decision on the bill.
I'm not making my decision, Senator. This is what public hearings are for, and perhaps maybe if you hold public hearings, you'll be able to understand what is going on.
Yes, we did hold public hearings, Mr. Chair.
You did not hold a public hearing on this bill.
We did, the chair held a hearing.
Thank you, Senator.
We did.
Senator San Augustin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to thank the panel, Carlos Comacho for being, for participating today. I'm just hoping that the Chamor Land Trust Commission, when they convene their meeting, they do discuss this bill and to read the bill. Because everything that was discussed here, questions that were insinuating, is in the bill. Want to talk about EBA, it's in the bill. Want to talk about the masquerade, it's in the bill. Read the bill. Know what you're reading, understand what you're looking at. Because that's all it is, it's a very simple bill. It's an opportunity for Chamor Land Trust to move forward. Sure, some may say, trying to raise money? So be it. And I'm going to ask you one simple question, Mr. Cruz. Have you ever been to the Fedidian Point and walked that terrain? Because I have.
Not, well, but I.
Okay. I've walked that terrain and it's not something that anybody's going to say, I like to get a lease in this area, it's too rocky. You can't even enter it with a truck. You have to walk, but that's okay. But with that, you know, Joey, I'm, I'm hoping that the board, the commission will be able to hear the bill and, and address it, and then we move on from there. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, and we'll wait for their response. And thank you all for participating today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator San Augustin. There will be no further comments or questions. This will conclude today's public hearing on both Bill 11, on Bill 7-38 and 119-38. The committee will continue to accept written statements on today's hearings, which may be mailed to my office on the second floor of the Guam Congress Building at 163 Chalanc Santo Papa in Hagaña. You may also send your statements to us at Vice Speaker Tony Ada at guamlegislature.gov. Thank you all for your participation, and this public hearing is adjourned, and the time now is 5:27 PM. Thank you, everyone.